Good evening. I'm calling this meeting of the Barrington Town Council to order at 6:34. In a moment, I'll ask that we rise for the pledge. And I'll ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing, I'd ask that we have a moment of silence first for the 20th anniversary of 9/11, which affected all of us in so many different ways, and also for the death of Sergeant Gino Caputo. Sergeant Caputo was a member of the Barrington Police Department for 27 years. The Barrington Police Department has lost one of its brothers, and the community of Barrington has lost one of her sons. Please join me in a moment of silence. I now ask our town manager, Jim Cunha, to take us through the announcements.
Thank you, Mr. President. The library, through the fall, will be offering outdoor storytimes. They're also beginning to offer in-person classes on Wednesdays at 10:00 a.m. For more information and to register, go to the library's website at www.barringtonlibrary.org. If you notice coming in tonight, if you take a look at our flagpole for the month of September, flying below our National Ensign is the "Here to Serve" flag flying that's honoring our Barrington Police and Barrington Fire Departments. An update on the East Bay Bike Path, we're completing construction, or DOT is completing construction of the expanded sidewalks on either side of the bridge. We have the children, we have details out there protecting the children crossing County Road every day. We have to remain flexible as they continue to work through this, and we'll keep our town posted. For tree removal, calendar to year, we've removed 83 trees and we planted 93 trees. And finally, for those that may be interested, Gino Caputo's funeral arrangements, visiting hours will be Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Nardillo Funeral Home in Cranston. The funeral will be at the Holy Ghost Church on Knight Street in Providence Thursday at 11:00 a.m. That's all I have, Mr. President.
We're taking something out of order today, one of our resolutions. One of the things that I think is especially important in this month that we are celebrating our first responders with the flag is to remember just how much they do for us. The death of Gino Caputo sort of brings that out for us. But we also are frequently fortunate to hear about the work that they do, whether it's working with a disabled child and protecting them, or, in this case, saving a life. So I would ask if anyone has any changes or anything to this resolution that is in front of us? And if there are none, then I will ask that we move it and have the officers come forward.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd ask that Officers Michael Green and Officer Robbins please come forward. If you can just stand over where that empty microphone is, I'll just read this resolution. This is a resolution of the Barrington Town Council honoring Assistant Harbor Patrol Officers Michael Green and Steve Robbins. Whereas, on June 20th, Harbor Patrol II, commanded by Assistant Harbor Patrol Officers Michael Green and Steve Robbins, were working the scheduled tour of duty when they were dispatched to Canemica Point for a water rescue. And whereas, Barrington Police Fire Dispatcher also received the following ominous information: 11-year-old Carli, wearing a blue top and yellow bottom, was drowning. And whereas, Assistant Harbor Patrol Officers Green and Robbins were the first on the scene and immediately responded to the area of Canemica Lighthouse, located in Upper Narragansett Bay, followed shortly by Warwick Marine 4, Warwick Marine 2, Warwick Marine 6, Providence Fire Marine, Cranston Fire Marine 2, East Greenwich Fire Marine, Warren Fire Marine, Bristol Marine 7, and two Coast Guard vessels and D E M vessels, which indicated the dire circumstances. And whereas, Harbor Patrol Officers Green and Robbins were alerted by bystanders on shore of a swimmer in distress and quickly began a search, and were able to locate and save an unidentified male who entered the water in attempt to render aid to 11-year-old Yascarli Martinez and Good Samaritan Valentin Sanchez, who unfortunately lost their lives. Now, therefore, be it resolved, had not for the quick response of Green and Robbins, three people would have died that day. Their lifesaving actions and selflessness reflect the dedication to duty. Knowing that every second mattered and loss of life was at stake, they swiftly responded to the area and performed with valor. Their actions on that day are highly commendable. And now, therefore, be it further resolved, that the Honorable Town Council for the Town of Barrington, State of Rhode Island, by virtue of the authority vested in them by the citizens of Barrington, on their behalf, extend to patrolmen, extend to the officers, the gratitude of the Barrington community for their individual and collective efforts adopted by Barrington Town Council this day, the 13th day of September 2021. We will discuss and act on them as a group. These are a group that are usually considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There won't be a separate discussion on these items unless a town council member or citizen so requests, and the request is for good cause, in which the item, in which case, the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Does anyone from the council have anything they'd like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Counselor Breyer.
Yes, I'd like to remove resignations. I'm sorry, I'd like to remove reappointments. And I had a comment on resignations that I'd like to mention.
Sure.
At last week's Senior Services Advisory Board meeting, two members announced that they'd be resigning. I don't know if they formally submitted anything to the town clerk's office yet. They have not, but that's just something for us to keep in mind a little later in the agenda when we're interviewing for that position.
Okay. Anything else on the agenda you'd like to remove? Anyone else on the council?
Mr. President, could I request that you remove Item 13, the Class F license? That application has been withdrawn.
Does anyone from the audience want to remove any item from the agenda? Okay. Seeing none. With the exceptions of Items 6 and 13, do I hear a motion to accept the Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, we'll go to Item 6, and this is reappointments. Counselor Breyer?
I'll be abstaining.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve reappointments to boards and commissions as set forth in Item 6?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions?
Aye.
One abstention. That motion carries. Item 13 is a Class F license. We've learned, I think it was today or over the weekend, that St. Luke's Knights of Columbus are not going to seek a Class F license. Is that right? So we don't need to move that for passage. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on interviews and appointments. We've already begun interviews for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. We have seven vacancies remaining.
The solicitor and I both think that you did not vote on the Consent Agenda as a whole.
Oh, we did not?
Did they? Okay, we didn't think you did.
Oh, we did.
I apologize.
Unanimous.
Yeah, we did. So for the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, we interviewed several people on July 26th, and we appointed a number, but we have not completed the appointments and interviews. And in the interim, one of our appointments has withdrawn for health reasons. So we will now move on to the remaining interviews and appoint the remaining members, and then we will then appoint a chair and a vice chair of this. So the first person to be interviewed is, oh, we've already interviewed them, is Candace Bayer. Oh, she's withdrawn, I see. Jennifer Castell, please.
So much easier on Zoom. Do I sit here?
You sit, please. Yes, please tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the DEI Committee.
What I hope to bring to the committee, I guess my, what I hope to bring first to the committee is my passion. And I feel like in everything I do, in my job as a librarian at a local university, as an educator in the classroom, as a parent, as a friend, as a member of the community, I always strive for going beyond just this feeling of inclusion that everybody talks about to like true belonging. And the reason why I'm going for this, to be a part of this committee, is that I want to be a part of town where people come here and regardless of who they are, but especially if they're from, you know, traditionally marginalized communities, that they feel like not only are they welcomed, but that they belong here, which is so different from just feeling welcomed. So, and I could talk about that forever, but I am, as I said, I'm a librarian at a university in Providence, and so much of what being a librarian is, is a focus on equity. It's not just helping people find books, but that's a part of it. It's also making sure that everybody who walks into the building and who we come across feels like they have been given the same service and access that everybody else has, that again, that they feel that they belong. And I also am an educator, and in the classroom, I work tirelessly to focus on making sure every student feels like their voice is heard. I am on the DEI Committee at the university, along with administrators, other faculty, and staff, and we've done programming, book clubs, of course, as a librarian, I am part of that, but, and other ways to try to bring equity, inclusion, and a sense of belonging to the community there. So I also want to bring that to the place where I live, where I raise my children, where I have friends, and roots. Do you need more specifics, or?
No, I think you, unless anyone has any questions? So thank you for your willingness to serve. We're going to hear from the other folks, and then we will make our selections.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Candace Sharpentier, and I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
I'm Sharpentier.
Sharpentier. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to DEI Committee.
Well, I'm a nine-year resident of Barrington. Anyone who's seen me before, especially when we were doing the DEI Commission, you know that I was reluctant to come here because of the reputation that Barrington has outside of this community of being racist and not very welcoming, which unfortunately incidents have happened even in the past couple of years, and, you know, very public incidents to kind of reinforce that. What I want to do is be a part of making Barrington a place where, like Jenny said, where they belong, where they feel comfortable. Any family moving here from anywhere, any socioeconomic status, of any kind of ability, physical, mental, age, they should all know that they're welcome here. You know, if you're putting down your money to buy a home here and send your children to school here, you should know that you have a place here. I would like to proudly say that I'm on the DEI School Committee, and what we've done in the school systems, what Gina Bay has done, the books my children are reading, excuse me, reading, and the conversations that they're having, I am so proud that, you know, recently, when I met another Black woman who talked about looking at Barrington as a place to live, and she was told, hey, it's racist, you may not want to go there, I was able to counter that with, hey, you know, this is what they're doing in schools. My kids are reading Kwame Alexander, you know, this is amazing work. So, you know, I always say, at least we're trying, you know, and I'm really proud of that. So instead of like the shame that I kind of had earlier on, I have a sense of pride that we're moving towards something that, you know, other communities aren't doing. They can, you know, they give the lip service, but nobody's doing half of what we're doing. The Film Festival that happened over the summer, and again, what we're doing in the schools, so that's why I'd like to serve.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you for your willingness to serve. Good evening. If you could tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring.
Sure. My name's Andrew Simon. I've been in Barrington for 11 years. What brought me here was my job. I serve as pastor at St. James Lutheran Church here in town. Served in my time here with the Barrington Interfaith Clergy. I was the chair of that group for a while. Worked with Andy Klein from Temple Habonim, along with Trinky Bruckner, on the book series, conversation series. St. James co-sponsors the Black Lives Matter vigils with Trinky and the Barrington Interfaith Partners. We co-sponsored the Ibram X. Kendi event. You know, I think in my role as a clergy person, probably the most important thing I do is listen to other people and listen to their stories. And I think that this is what a lot of the DEI work has to do, where it starts, is in listening, you know, across the board. I spoke to a buddy of mine when we were picking up the kids from school this afternoon and talking about what we were doing tonight, and I mentioned this, and he kind of, he kind of rolled his eyes like, you know, what could possibly come out of that in a town like Barrington? And I think that's, to me, sort of the heart of this question and this conversation, is that at its root, you know, dealing with issues of diversity and equity and inclusion, you know, deals with the sort of implicit assumptions that we make, you know? And I took part in Adam Mastoon's workshops, and that started with a conversation around bias. And we all have these implicit biases, and I think the conversation I had this afternoon was a really, really good illustration of that, of sort of saying, well, we know what this town is and what it's made up of and why bother. You know, and I sort of challenged him on that, and I said, well, this is kind of the reason we need to do this. And, you know, one of the other stories I shared with him was, and I had a hard time hearing the person who went before me, but I think maybe she touched on some of the similar things. You know, I think I've been, I've been really impressed with, I have two children, my younger son's in third grade, and I've been really impressed over the years, coming home, how excited he's been to tell me all about the different traditions and things that he's learning at school. And it's not just, you know, well, it's Martin Luther King Day, so let's read a little book about Martin Luther King. He's coming home, and he has real substance and real enthusiasm when he talks about, well, we don't celebrate this, but my classmate celebrates this, and this is what they do, and isn't this really interesting, and this is why they do it? And he really lights up. And I think that, you know, if we're able to facilitate conversations that are rooted in listening and seeking to understand one another, I think we'll uncover some of that same passion as a community. And I think also, you know, there's the opportunity to do some of that work for those whose bias says that Barrington is what it is, and this has always been this way, and this is what it's always going to be. You know, I think that's, to me, a real strong reason why we need to have a further, deeper conversation. And I think I bring skills for listening and a background of involvement in the issues around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I appreciate you considering it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Any questions? Thank you, Pastor. Next person is, oh, Jack Van Leer withdrew. So we have interviewed all of the folks who have applied, and we have been very fortunate in the folks who are volunteering for this. I'm sure I speak for all of us when I say we're really grateful for your willingness to do so. This is going to be an important committee. I think we really, as a town, this is one of the issues that we really need to face. These are, it's one of the key issues for us. And this, along with some other things that we're doing, this is not the solution, it's the beginning of finding solutions. So I would like to, of the people who we have interviewed, I would like to nominate Candace Sharpentier as a member of the DEI Committee.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And any abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you. I should note, we have, so we have six more nominees. Four more will be full members, and then two will be alternates. Do I have that right?
That's correct. You also need to decide who's going to have a three-year term, who's going to have a two, and who's going to have a one. In last meeting, you decided that the two alternates would have a two-year term.
Okay.
So as you get to the alternates, they're automatically a two, but then you're going to have to divvy up the rest of the terms, term lengths.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
I'd like to make a nomination. I nominate Andrew Simon as a member of the DEI Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions? The motion carries. Thank you.
I would like to nominate Wafa Fraj.
Is there a second? Okay, there being no second, the motion does not carry. Yes, please.
I would like to nominate Jennifer Castell to be a member of the DEI Committee.
Okay. I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
I would like to make a nomination as well. I'd like to nominate A. Larry Barron to the DEI Committee.
A. Larry Barron. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. I would like to nominate Rebecca Taub for the DEI Committee. We interviewed her last time.
I will second that.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions? The motion carries. So that's one, two, three, four, five. We have the two more. Please, go ahead, Vice President Hum.
I'd like to nominate Tanya Moselli, the DEI Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Do we have one more?
We do have one more. I'd like to nominate David Meal.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. So we have one, two, five, six, seven. So we have, we have selected all of the members of the DEI Committee. Those include the ones who were selected last time, which are Stephen Felix, Lyanna, excuse me, Leonah Maris, and Braxton Medlin, and Glenn Moore Wagner. So first things first, I'd like to nominate Braxton Medlin as president of the DEI Committee, or as chair, excuse me, of the DEI.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Well, I would, I'd like to nominate Leonah Maris as the vice chair of the DEI Committee.
I would second that. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay, so now we have to decide three years, two years, and one year. I would just suggest that the alternates, the last two people that we nominated were Tanya Moselli and David Meal, and I would just suggest that they be the alternates with a two-year term. That's, I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries. So Tanya Moselli and David Meal are alternates with two-year terms. Just to, so that we can explain what an alternate is, alternates fully participate in all discussions. In the event that there is not a quorum, the alternates may vote in that circumstance. And typically, although not necessarily, typically, when someone leaves the committee, we usually sort of promote the alternate to full member. I suppose we should say that, I'll make a motion that Tanya Moselli is the first alternate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That would make David Meal the second alternate.
May I just clarify understanding of the alternates?
Sure.
It's, you had said if there isn't a quorum, but it's if, if all voting members aren't present, right? So if, if seven, if it's a committee of seven and six are there, an alternate would vote.
That's correct. That's right. You're right. So it's, it's actually, in this case, it's a committee of nine, so if eight, if, let's say, seven show up, then the two alternates would be eligible to vote. So that's right. I appreciate that. I misspoke.
President, I have a point of clarification as well. Did we previously say the chair and vice chair would both have the three-year, two of the three-year terms?
If not, I think that makes sense.
I think that makes sense, so.
So how many three-year terms do we have remaining, then?
Mary, how many three-year terms do we Uh, Mary, how many three-year terms do we have? We have 11 people. Four three-year terms?
Four three-year terms.
Okay.
Four three-year terms.
So that means Brax, uh, let's, uh, let's see, and the, the people nominated the last time are Stephen Felix and Glenn Moore Wagner. Uh, I would make a motion that Steelen, Stephen Felix, Glenn Moore Wagner, Leanna Maris, and Braxton Medlin each have four-year terms, excuse me, three-year terms.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Um, I would like to make a motion that Candace Sharpentier have a three-year term to the DEI Committee. Um, I know that's splitting hairs to, but individually, I, I believe that Candace, with her experience at the DEI Committee on the School Committee, has great experience to lend, and I would, um, hope that she would stay on for a significant time.
Despite, despite voting aye on that last measure, I, I agree with you, and I, and I would, uh, second that motion.
Okay, so we've, we've already had a, a vote. We can always, Amy, we can always just have a vote to overrule our previous vote.
Could we, could we vote to add, to change one of the two-year terms to a three-year term?
Um, I'm not sure what that does to the, uh, the staggered terms piece. Usually we try to set it up so there are staggered terms, so we're not doing 11 at once, as we did in the first time.
But this would just be a, a change of one, so it's either six and five, or five and six?
Uh, no, it'd be six and, uh, three and two. So, um, yeah, six and three and two, if we did it that way.
We, we have one-year terms.
One-year term for two, two-year terms for some, and three-year terms for others.
I, yeah, I forgot about the one-year terms.
Okay, so, uh, I'll take that as a motion to.
Motion to change one of the two-year terms to a three-year term.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. And now, um, do we, do I hear a motion to appoint Stephen Felix, Leanna Maris, Braxton Medlin, Glenn Moore Wagner, and Candace Sharpentier to three-year terms?
Second. Oh, motion made.
So moved.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Um, yes.
I move, I move to appoint Andrew Simon to one of the two-year terms. That's available.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
And with the alternates being two-year terms, that.
We, we already.
Just the one-year terms remaining?
Yes, that's right. Um, and so, um, by, by default, Mary, the remaining, uh, members are for one-year terms.
So is that, I don't, um, so your alternates are, um.
I believe that is Jennifer Castell, A. Larry Baron, Rebecca Taub. Is that, do you have that? Okay. Uh, okay, well, that concludes our, uh, appointments for the DEI Committee. Thank you all so much for, uh, your willingness to serve. It's a, it's a bigger-sized committee, and it's got, uh, important issues to, to address. So, thank you, everyone. Um, next item on our agenda is the Economic Development Commission. We have four vacancies. One of our interviewees, um, was not able, I'm, I'm forgetting which one had, was unable to make it tonight. Mary, do you recall?
It's Kevin Manering.
Kevin Manering, okay.
President Carol?
Yes.
I will need to recuse myself from this vote and this process.
Okay.
I filed a form with, uh, with Mary before, uh, before hearing today.
Okay, thank you.
Given that this is my first in-person recusal, I don't know where to go, and I'm not looking for any smart ideas.
You, you can go in there, or you could go out in the hallway. Uh, it's, it's been a while since we've been doing this. I'm used to turning the button on that thing off, and then you can.
So there's not like a trapdoor or anything?
No, no trapdoors.
I, I also have to recuse.
You do, okay. Um, okay, so, we have two recusals. We, we, uh, we are ready to interview our first candidate, which is Michael Britto. Mr. Britto, please come forward.
Good.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for coming in. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you hope to bring to the Economic Development Committee.
Sure. So my name is Mike Britto. I'm new to Barrington. I moved to, uh, a new home off Selwans.
Could you move a little closer to the mic, so the people in the audience can hear you, Mr. Britto? Thank you.
How's this?
Better.
Um, my name again is Mike Britto. I'm new to town. I just moved to Barrington in February, um, onto a, a little road off Selwans there. I have a wife and two children, and I've lived in Rhode Island pretty much my entire life, with a short stint, um, in Manhattan for work. And so I've always known about Barrington, and heard, and seen what a great town it is, you know, how immaculate it is, and, uh, the great town functions and schools and everything. So, um, it's been a pretty attractive place, I think, uh, to me, my whole life. And, um, recently, when I had the opportunity to move again, uh, we started looking pretty seriously at Barrington and, and bought our home. Um, so since arriving in town, I have been meeting neighbors and, you know, reaching out to various people, uh, in town, friends of friends, and gotten to know, um, quite a few people, and, um, was having some discussions with them about meeting more people and getting more involved in the town, and seeing, um, what I could do to help the town, and what, um, activities were going on that could help me get better integrated into the community. And, um, one thing led to another, and I was sharing some of my experience, like my role, um, that I currently have, currently have now as vice president of a sales team, and some of my experience teaching sales and marketing and entrepreneurship, uh, part-time at Columbia University. And the suggestion came up that I should, um, look into the EDC as, as a way to contribute. And after doing some research, um, and talking to other people in town about their ideas for improving the economic climate and some of the challenges associated with that, I thought, yeah, this, this might be a pretty good fit. So, um, what I hope to bring is the experience that I have, uh, as a small business owner, as a, a, assistant professor of entrepreneurship and, and sales, um, to help the town identify ways in which it could, uh, improve its, its economic climate, um, and take advantage of some of the great resources the town has in terms of people, property, et cetera, um, to, uh, to make it a better place to do business for, for all of Barrington's residents.
Great. Um, I have a question.
Sure.
You, you mentioned, uh, Columbia and that, that you're, um, heading a sales team. It sounds like the, the small business, the local, you don't have a business in town.
In Bristol.
In Bristol?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I ask is that there, there's a couple of spots on the EDC. We have a number of vacancies, but there are a couple of spots where we try and give preference to somebody who is a business owner within town.
Understood.
But I just wanted to see if that fit for you, but, um, any other questions?
Yeah, if, if you're comfortable with my experience, then, you know, I'd be happy to contribute. And again, totally understand the preference for somebody that owns a business in town. Um, so if, you know, that's, if it's not the right fit, not the right time, totally understand.
Well, um, thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Any questions?
No questions.
Great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Um, Brian Hoffman. Mr. Hoffman?
Good.
Good. Thank you for coming in tonight. Hot night, my mask make it a little hotter. I should say to everyone that, um, we as a council haven't talked about this, um, but I know that our town managers reached out to the governor's office. In light of the Delta variant and the need for masking, we're asking if we can kind of go back to, um, Zoom meetings, because I know that it's a little difficult to hear. I'm trying to articulate as best I can, and, and I appreciate everyone's patience. But for now, we are required to have in-person meetings unless and until we get an emergency order otherwise. So, that's, that's kind of where we stand for it. So please, sir, uh, tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to EDC.
Sure. Uh, my name is Brian Hoffman. I am a financial services professional. I moved here about two and a half years ago and got very involved with the community very quickly. I am a board member on the Barrington Business Association, as well as the East Bay Chamber of Commerce. Uh, I head up the PR committee for the East Bay Chamber as well. And, uh, this past summer, I helped and eventually, I guess, got promoted to co-director of the film festival that happened. Um, just kept, kept moving up the chain there, very unofficial, of course. Uh, I've got two kids. I am, uh, an undefeated T-ball coach and U6 soccer coach, so I'm very proud of that. First game was this past weekend. They don't keep score, just for the record.
So it does mean that you're undefeated?
We haven't lost. We have not lost. Um, yeah, so that's the, the volunteer work I've done since I moved here. My fiance grew up here, so I've been coming here for about eight or nine years, and love the town, but we just bought the house a couple of years ago, and I think I can bring a lot to the table with, um, different connections with the different groups I'm already a part of, and already worked very well with Matt Amaral, of course, with the BBA. And, yeah.
Great.
Um, and I don't have a small business here, but I work out of my home as, as of last March, so that's become my office.
Yeah, more and more of us have.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your willingness to serve, too.
Thank you.
Um, Vivian Karian?
She's withdrawn.
Oh, she's withdrawn. Okay, let's see. David Queeks, I'm not going to say that right. Queekstra? Uh, Brian Ruah. Mr. Ruah. Good evening, sir. Thanks for coming in. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to EDC.
So, my name is Brian Ruah. I've been in, uh, Barrington for about six years now. Moved here with, uh, my wife and one daughter at the time. We now have two daughters. Previously, before moving to Barrington, I lived in Berkeley, Mass., so I was a member of the Finance Committee in Berkeley. A little bit different in Berkeley, the Finance Committee kind of set the budget for the town and proposed it to the annual town meeting. So I have that experience and knowing how the town finance works. I've been looking at different opportunities in town to volunteer my time, and, uh, this one popped up, and it looked like a, a good opportunity that I could bring my previous background on the Finance Committee, as well as, uh, my, uh, professional experience in manufacturing management. Um, and that's about it.
Okay. Uh, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so we actually have, uh, four vacancies. Um, we have interviewed this evening Mike Britto, Brian Hoffman, and Brian Ruah. We still have Kevin Manering, uh, who is, was unavailable this evening. He's now feeling well, so, um, does someone want to make a motion? Vice President Hum, please.
Yeah, I think, well, first of all, I just want to say it's, um, encouraging to see so many applicants for that particular board. I think it's, personally, I think it's an important board, and, um, one that can be creative and have a positive impact on the community. So thanks to everyone for volunteering. Um, I, I'll make a, I'll make a motion first and then a comment after. So I, I move to nominate Michael Britto, Brian Hoffman, and Brian Ruah to the Economic Development Commission for the term represented on our agenda.
With an expiration date of September 30, 2024, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And two recusals. So, uh, Michael Britto, Brian Hoffman, and, and, uh, Brian Ruah, you are newest members of the EDC. Thank you very much. And Vice President Hum.
So my, my second comment, maybe a question, and maybe Amy or Jam or Mary, one of you know this, but if we were not to vote on the fourth member tonight, would there, I know that we just increased the number of members of that committee, but would there be a quorum for their next meeting?
I didn't hear the entire question, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, I, I think the answer is yes, but if we were to not vote on the fourth member tonight, given that there are two applicants who weren't here, would they still have quorum for their next meeting?
Yes, they would. Yeah, so you could delay the, the last nominee until the next meeting, if you'd like.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I, I propose we do that, just because we have two people for one spot. Um, it'll give both of them an opportunity to, um, to interview.
Great. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda, oh, uh, for council members, we are now finished with Economic Development Commission, so, uh, the council members, unless they're recusing from Parks and Rec, uh, can return? Did they find air conditioning? Uh, next on our agenda is Parks and Recreation Commission, and we have a student representative, Max Dunn. Is Max Dunn here this evening? Please, come forward. Mr. Dunn, thanks for coming in tonight. Please tell us what you hope to bring to Parks and Rec.
Uh, yeah, thank you. So, um, my name is Max Dunn. I'm a senior at the high school here, and, um, I've grown up my whole life in Barrington, and I've always been an avid member of the strong public recreations here in town. And I'm really excited to, um, apply for this position, because I think I can bring a, um, a unique perspective and represent a lot of the youth community that I see a lot around, in town, using the, um, Parks and Recreation around town. And, um, uh, one of the main things I'm involved in is soccer, and I've always been, um, part of the town leagues around town, uh, starting when we moved here and up until now. I've always been in the youth leagues, and even now I'm on the, uh, high school team. We actually just came from practice today. Um, I've also been involved in refereeing, and, uh, this year I'm starting to coach one of the youth teams in town, too. So that's an exciting opportunity. And just another thing that I'm excited about is the, um, new basketball courts in the middle school. I'd also like to personally thank all of you for making that happen, because, um, over the summer, me and my friends have used that almost every night. It's a great, uh, place for the community to bond around, and just, it's a really cool, new place.
Great. Great. Uh, any questions for Mr. Dunn? Thank you very much.
I think, I think Vice President.
No, I, I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank you for your willingness to serve. Um, it's pretty cool as a high school student to have this opportunity, so kudos to you for doing that.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much.
Do, uh, we will be voting in just a moment. You can take your seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to nominate Max Dunn to be the student representative to the Parks and Recreation Commission with an expiration date of June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions? Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn. Uh, you'll, you'll be getting an email about the next meeting, so, thanks. Uh, next we have for our Senior Services Advisory Board, we have one vacancy. However, Counsel Brier has pointed out that it sounds like there are two additional folks who are interested, who have expressed that they will be, uh, resigning in the near future. Um, I don't think we've gotten any notice yet, but, uh, we might want to just keep I don't think we've gotten any notice yet, but we might want to just keep that in mind as we interview these people, so we can always, if someone is interested in that vacancy does appear, we don't have to interview them twice. So I would first call Virginia Mead forward. This is for the second alternate on the Senior Services Advisory Board. Ms. Mead, thank you for coming in. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you're going to bring to Senior Services.
Yes, I'm Virginia Abrams Mead. I live at Seven Ridgewood Road. I've been in Barrington 58 years and in Rhode Island all my life. I'd like to stay here. I'm in my fourth residence, and the reason I'm here tonight is thank you to you. You are anticipating senior housing of the situation in which I've been most familiar. I want to stay here forever. I want my last vote to be in Barrington, so thank you. My experience started in 1980 as a member of the Board of Directors of the Scandinavian Home in Cranston. We took on the charge of senior housing, and we developed a three-story, 35-unit, one-bedroom senior living. And we have developed from that in that some of those now are assisted living. And we have taken some of our units and been able, because they were nicely sized, to a common area, a shared bathroom, and two private bedrooms. So we have affordable housing now within our unit. Excuse me. Don't do this very often. From there, I was appointed to a group. There were four nursing homes. It was St. Antoine, St. Elizabeth, the Scandinavian Home Steer House, and they were the grantors for CareLink of Rhode Island. And that started in 1997, and it was a management service organization for cost containment for our participants. From that, I was moved on, still under the auspices of the Scandinavian Home, to the PACE. And PACE is coming to our neighborhood. It's coming up to Nehadii Chafie, and that's a program of all-inclusive care for the elderly which provides all of the services needed that you can stay in your own home, in your community, with your family. We have the site now, as I said, it's on, I think it's Timmins Lane, came up from Chapman. And we have a site in One Socket, Westerly Daycare, and we also have a relationship now with St. Clair's down in Newport. We have medical care, dental care, everything a person needs that they can have the services. We go into homes. We have daycare centers. We bring everybody. So having been in the development stage of all of that, I feel that I have that experience which I can share. And so I'm coming out of volunteer retirement into hopefully another volunteer position. One of my activities with PACE, which really gave me the most joy, was for the last four years of my term, and we had term limits, was with the Participants' Activities Committee. I was the liaison, and it was absolutely delightful. And the highlight of the time when it happened that I was there was that Senator Whitehouse came and our participants just loved it, and he stayed with us for the whole meeting and shared with their concerns and his concerns. That is what I have to offer. Thank you for keeping me in Barrington. My children grew up here, too.
Any, any questions for Ms. Mead? Thank you very much. Diana Shaw. Ms. Shaw. Thanks for coming in. Please tell us a little about yourself and what you can bring to Senior Services.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. I'm afraid I have a tough act to follow, and Mrs. Mead, she gave an accurate and excellent description of what has been happening in the state of Rhode Island with senior care over the past couple of years. I am a longtime Meals on Wheels volunteer. I, too, have done a lot of board work and volunteering in the senior care space and was looking for a place to meld my interest in senior care with an opportunity to volunteer in my town. I moved to Barrington with my wife and two boys about nine years ago. And I think that, as we all know, aging, becoming an age-friendly town is something that we could certainly achieve. There's an organization called Age Friendly Rhode Island that's very interested and active in having towns become more age-friendly. For 25 years, I was a nursing home administrator, assisted living administrator, executive director. I currently work for a health insurance and their senior care product. And I'm also very active with Sage, which is an LGBTQ senior aging organization. So thank you again for the opportunity, and I hope to be of service to the town.
Thank you very much. Any, any questions for Ms. Shaw? Thank you very much for your willingness to serve. And for both of you, no matter what happens tonight, from what we've learned, we may be calling on you sooner rather than later, so. Okay, so we've heard from both candidates for this second alternate position. Does anyone want to make a motion? Yes?
So what will happen is you have this one vacancy tonight. It's the second alternate. That person that you will appoint will become the second alternate. When I get the resignations in with the two full members, that second alternate, Michelle, my assistant, will call the second alternate and say, would you like to move up to a full member? The first alternate never wants to leave being the first alternate. So the person that you appoint tonight will be asked to move up probably as soon as I get those resignations in. And then you will have a full member and a second alternate at a, maybe at a next or second meeting, okay?
Right. Okay, thank you. Does anyone want to make a motion? Then, in this case, I will make a motion to appoint.
Then Carol, I believe Council Conley did.
I was gonna make a motion. No, no, it's okay. It's okay. I would like to make a motion to appoint Diana Shaw to the Senior Services Advisory Board as the second alternate, potentially moving on to be a full member after the.
If you can sort of understand that, the way that that works, Mrs. Mead has experienced that, where you're kind of moving up and, almost involuntarily, but, okay, a motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And no abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you very much. You'll, you'll get an email with the next meeting date. Okay.
Our, our next meeting precedes the Senior Services next meeting because they met last week.
Okay, okay. So, next on our agenda is to discuss an act on ordinances. The first ordinance is, so I'm going to open the public hearing. The first one is 2021-15, an ordinance amendment to Chapter 33, Section 33-35, hospital, medical, and dental coverage. And I would ask our town manager just to give a brief explanation of that proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. What this ordinance would do would amend our medical and dental coverage so that if you had a spouse that was, who also worked for the town, if you, let me start at the beginning. If you do not take life insurance, you're an employee for the town, and you don't take health care insurance with the town, we give you a payback. We give you monies to, because you're not, we're not paying for your health coverage. The loophole here is if you and your spouse both work for the town, you could get the payback for the town not paying for your life insurance while your spouse is getting life insurance from the town. So what we're doing is we're pulling that loophole out. So if you, if you both work for the town, you can't get, you can't get a payout for not getting health insurance because your spouse is getting health insurance from the town.
Right. Okay. So I'm opening the public hearing, and does anyone from the public wish to be heard on Okay, seeing none. Anyone from the council want to be heard on this? Yes, Council Breyer.
Yes, I, I understand and agree with the rationale of excluding a spouse whose partner receives the health care, so otherwise the town would effectively be paying twice for that. With the, also the exclusion of an employee who's, who could be insured on a family plan, I think that inhibits the earning potential of a young employee. And I think that because their parents can afford to keep them on their health insurance that has nothing to do with the town isn't a reason that the town should not offer the payback to them.
I don't think it inhibits the earning potential. It just takes, the government allows parents to keep their child on their coverage till they're 26. Why would the town pay back that, give that person $8,000 stipend when they have medical coverage that's automatically given to them by federal code?
Well, because an employee whose parents can afford to shouldn't necessarily make more or less than an employee whose parents cannot afford to keep them on their health insurance.
I'm not sure if, I want to make sure that we're talking not apples and oranges here. This provides, in the same way that a spouse would, as Jim just talked about, if the, if you have an employee whose parent is on the, in the town and receiving health coverage under those circumstances, then the 26-year-old or under would not receive the option. It's not if, I think, I think I heard you say, if the parent has nothing to do with the town. It does, it's if the parent is an employee.
Is that accurate?
No, that's not. It's actually, if they, if they are under 26 years old, we would not give them the payback the way this ordinance is written right now. Because the, where they can go on the parent's insurance policy.
So I, I just don't view that as different than if, if I'm able to be covered on my spouse's policy who works at a private company, I'm able to get the buyback. But if it's my parents who are paying for me, I'm not able to get the buyback. It just doesn't seem equitable to me.
Our Human Resources Director, Mary Ann Olivera.
No, Mary Ann. Please.
So way back when, when the, sorry. Way back when, when the ordinance was originally written for the medical buyback, health insurance, you know, kids, dependent children were off their parents at 21, or if they were in, at 19, or if they were in college, they stayed till 22. Then the federal government allowed dependent children to be on parental coverage to 26. Nobody thought about that, you know? You look around Town Hall, we're kind of older. But now we're starting to hire some younger people, and they come in and they're on their parents' coverage. So to answer your question, if they're on their parents' coverage, they're not going, we're not going to pay them to not take our insurance, okay? What it does is, is, it's cheaper for us to not have you take our insurance and get a buyback than take our insurance. To answer your question, you were saying if the parents can't afford to cover their children, well, guess what? They need to have the coverage with us, right? So they're going to get the coverage with us. So they're either getting the coverage with us, or if they don't need the coverage because they're protected by the federal government and on their parents, when they hit 26, then they can get, and they come off their parents, then they're eligible for the buyback.
What if an employee was going to take a portion of the buyback and give it to their parents to help cover the cost of keeping them insured? I mean, it's very expensive to insure a dependent child, and the, the buyback is compensation because somebody else is paying for it.
Generally speaking, and I'll, I'll speak for the town of Barrington, but I know there's other levels of coverage. There's parent and child, parent and spouse, parent and family. Here at the town of Barrington, you either take family or, or individual. So we don't have the four levels or four tiers. Now, not always, of course, there's always exceptions, but generally, like I said, parents, if they have the family plan already, it's not costing them anymore to keep son or daughter on the plan till 26. If they can't, then they get it with us. And they're getting it with us at a very good rate. So that's, that's what we're asking you to think about. And I understand there's always the exception, but generally speaking, almost always, everybody that's come to us that has been under 26 has said, I'm on my parents. I, you know, I'm on my parents.
Counsel Conley.
When I think about, and first, I just want to say that I agree with Council Breyer on this, because when I think about the purpose of it, I think of, my husband and I are both, we both work, and so we both have the option to get health insurance through our work. We're full-time employees of different places. Because I don't take health insurance from my employer because I'm covered under his, I would really appreciate the $8,000 to add to my salary. So I think of it in the same spirit here, is that if the employee is covered under their parents, they're already covered elsewhere, so they don't need to take insurance from the town, in which case, it seems to me that they should be also eligible for the buyback. I do understand, though, if their parent is an employee of the town and then Barrington is paying both for the, the child under 26 and the parent who is a dependent of another employee in town, that to me makes sense, that they should not have the option of the buyback. But it seems to me that if they have another coverage, that they should still be eligible to increase their income in the same way.
That's certainly something you can.
Well, one thing you probably need to consider is we have a number of under 26-year-olds, especially firefighters and police officers, that are currently under their parents and are not getting buybacks. That's an unfunded mandate that you'd be putting on the, on the town because they're currently not covered. We discovered this loophole when we were working off the spouse issue and decided we wanted to put it documented in, in this ordinance. So as Mary Ann said, no, no employee is going to be denied insurance. If they can't get it, if their parents don't have it, then, then we will provide it for them. What we're not doing is when a young person who is still eligible by federal law to be on their parents' policy, we're not giving them the buyback. That's what we're recommending.
And I understand the financial implications, but I do think that the spirit of the, of changing it is to be able to provide someone with the option who comes to, comes to a job with their own insurance.
Now, keep one thing in mind, the 26-year-old who gets the buyback, it, it wouldn't be the full $8,000, because that's for the family plan, right? So they're, they're going to be single. So let's say, and off the top of my head, I think it's around $3,000, but I, don't quote me on that. So we give them the $3,000 when they're aged 25 and 26, now we pull it away from them, you know, at 26, because now they're on our insurance. So their salary is going down, or their income, their earning potential has just gone down. Just keep that in mind.
So, as I'm reading this last sentence, if the employee is under the age of 26, the employee shall not be entitled to the medical buyback benefit or a separate medical dental plan. So as written, I think this would say, you don't get insurance if you're under 26 or a buyback.
No, they can get insurance. They absolutely can get insurance.
I, I understand that's the intent.
Yes.
But I think the language is written that way. So I would say that this would have to be amended, because what you're trying to say is, if you are on your parents' plan, you don't get a buyback.
Correct.
If your parents don't have you on their plan, we'll give you insurance.
Correct.
That's what, and I don't think that's what this says. So.
And then the other part of that is if your spouse works for the town of Barrington, you, you can't have one, one person getting the insurance and the other one getting the buyback when it's both under the town, you know, whether it's school in town or town in town. It's under both.
I think we're, at least four of us are in general agreement on, on the, on the spousal provision. The, the, the age, the age provision is broadly written, and, and I think needs to be further defined before we could, before we could accept that. And I'd also, I would like to see financial numbers and the practical implications of that as well. But that's, that's, that's our hangup. But I don't think there's any doubt about, about the spousal provision, at least not, not from me and not from what I hear my colleagues who have spoken so far saying.
Okay. All set?
So, yeah, yes, thank you. So we could continue this hearing and ask for additional data, just to get like, what, what does that mean? does that mean, in dollars and cents? Because I, I can imagine a range of options, including a separate carve-out for under the age of 26. Maybe you could reduce that if it was, you know, because they, if they don't have parents' insurance, first of all, we'd have to clarify that we would provide insurance if they wanted And we should also see the, the financial impact of that. So, do we want to continue this hearing? Is anyone opposed? Amy, do we need to move for a continuance? Okay.
Yes, and continue to the date of the next council meeting, please.
Do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing to the Monday, October 4, 2021 Town Council Meeting? I think that's all I need to say.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Next one is an ordinance amendment to Chapter 63, Section 63-8, License, Class, Number, and Fee. We've, this is a, a matter that is closely aligned with the next full item on our agenda, the public hearing onto, to granting a BV liquor license. We've all received a lot of emails on this, I would say, for myself, vastly more in support than opposed. And I know too that, that Counsel Costel has met with both the owner of the Montessori School and the owner of this, the applicant for Item 16. And I wonder if you could just give us just a few seconds on what, what they've kind of relayed to you.
Well, the, the major concern, as I understood it, there are, there are sort of satellite concerns between neighbors that happen as businesses. But the, the heart of it is whether or not you would be serving alcohol during the operation of the schools when you have a lot of traffic going in and out. And so in meeting with both parties, I thought that the, that we might be able to tailor a solution that would meet the concerns of the proprietor of the Montessori School, as well as the objectives of the business. We want to promote business in town as much as we can. And I think that the level of public support for the proprietors of Prince Ali's has been, has been solid on the whole, although not without opposition. So in doing so, in, in having these meetings, it was determined that the Montessori School closes at 4:00, they have piano lessons, things like that, that can go and start as, as late as 5:30, and then end at 6:00 during the week. There is no objection to the serving of alcohol at an earlier time on the weekends. And so what I would propose would be to allay any concerns and to compromise in a way that serves both parties, and I believe this is acceptable based on my conversations with the proprietors of Prince Ali's, is that we limit the service of alcohol at Prince Ali's to 5:30 and later on weekdays, and to noon and later on weekends and holidays that are recognized by the state of Rhode Island with the closure of government offices. That, I think, would meet the needs of Prince Ali's while also addressing the concerns of the Montessori School, because we do want to respect the rights of neighboring businesses to, to operate as they see fit and to maintain their property as they see fit. And I thought that was a fairly good compromise solution. The proprietors of Prince Ali's are supportive of that and can accept that solution. And so although the proprietor of the Montessori School is not as supportive of the liquor license as a whole, the communication to me was that this was a much better outcome, and that this, this was an improvement. And certainly, I think just logically, as long as the school, you're not seeing traffic in that school after 5:30, certainly not after 6:00, and it's completely closed on the weekends and during holidays, I think that's optimal for addressing both concerns. And that would be the pivot point that, that I would strike a compromise on.
Okay. Thank you for that. Before I open the public hearing, I wanted to see if anyone else had anything to say, just to sort of frame the discussion. Well, then I, I'm going to ask, before we open the public hearing, I would just say for myself, I would be inclined to follow that. We're all going to keep open minds and listen to whatever's said, but I, I am inclined to expand the number of licenses based on, on that, those, those suggestions from Counsel Costel. And I wonder if anyone feels comfortable kind of saying where they are now. Reason I ask that is, many years ago, Prince, Prince Ali came before us for a license, to a vicualling license, and brought a ton of people in support. And the then-president could tell that these people really wanted to support him, but everyone in the room wanted to support him. So we kind of cut short a lot of the discussion by finding out early that everyone was on the same page. So I just wanted to see if anyone feels comfortable in saying where they kind of stand at this point, keeping in mind we'll have an open mind and listen to what anyone has to say. Yes, Vice President Hum.
Sure, thank you, and thanks for the, the opportunity. I too support the approval of the license, subject to what folks have to say. It's been impactful before, so it can be impactful again, so I don't want to dissuade anybody if you have something to say. I think I said at the last meeting, I think Prince Ali's Kebab has been innovative, flexible, patient in terms of some of the things that it's tried to do with its business, and they see this as the next step in improving its business and being a community partner. Many of the emails and support that we've received are from neighbors who are in support of this and support of the business as a whole, in terms of their role within that section of the community. So I, I just wanted to mention that, that I'm in favor of it. I'm also appreciative of everybody involved, and Counselor Costel, for talking it through. I think that's a wonderful thing, a great idea, and clearly this is a situation where, from what we've heard, it seems to have worked. And thanks to everyone for participating in that discussion.
Anyone else?
So my only point of clarification would just be, do we need to change the type of license if there are restrictions, or is it still just the general BVL license?
It can just be the BVL license, and we can add restrictions. We have checked with the solicitor on this. We can add time restrictions on it.
In that case, I have to say I'm really impressed by the compromise that's, that's come together, and I think that it's, it works for, for everybody. I know that the last year and a half have been really difficult for small businesses, specifically those that rely on eat-in dining, and I think that to encourage Prince Ali's Kebab to continue to grow, and, and I'm fully supportive of the license.
Well, great.
Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to support it as well.
So, so let's do this then. We're opening, I'm going to open the public hearing. Everyone who wants to speak on this topic is, is entitled to do so. I would ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and if you want to talk again at the end, we can, we can go through it, but we'll take folks in order if, if folks want to speak in support or against this idea. Does anyone from the public want to be heard on this? Okay, please, come forward. Mr. Remeschitis.
How are you? Tom Remeschitis, one Howard. Are we skipping on different items? I thought we were on 2021-16 in an ordinance. Now we're talking about Ali Kebabs. Does that coincide with that?
They are connected.
Okay.
Because we can't grant Ali Kebabs unless we approve 2021-16.
Okay. And public comment, did we skip that?
We did, but that was my fault, and we're going to come back to that after.
Can you guys just speak a little closer to the mic, because it's really hard to hear you back?
Sure, sure. Okay. Does anyone from the public want to be heard on 2021-16? Please, come forward, sir.
Hi.
Hi. You can sit down, please.
I just want to speak in favor of these guys. I've seen them build the business from a pretty humble convenience store to, to the restaurant that they are now, and just want to see them have the same shot the rest of the restaurants in town do. I mean, my kids went to the Montessori School. It's a good place, shouldn't interfere.
Great.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Excuse me, can I have your name?
Jason Haas.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on 2021-16? In that case, I am closing the public hearing. Amy, is this where we would add restrictions if we wanted to, or would it be with the license?
The, the increase in the number of license is, isn't attached to any one particular license, although you know it's necessary. So any conditions or restrictions to be imposed on the new license should be done in conjunction with the granting of the new license.
Okay, great. So, do I hear a motion to approve 2021-16 as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. We'll come right back to the BV license in just a moment, but for now, we have a public hearing on the 2021-17, which is a renewal of our ordinance of declaration of emergency. The issue here is that we believed that our declaration of emergency would expire when the governor's declaration of emergency expired. However, Governor McKee has issued a new declaration of emergency based upon the Delta variant. In that case, the question is whether we, as a town, should continue our state of emergency, the purpose of which was to allow our town manager to react swiftly to any news that came forth, to issue directives such as masking in all public places, all, all town municipal departments, as he did, and any other restrictions. So, I am opening the public hearing into the renewal of ordinance of declaration of emergency. Does anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? Okay, anyone from the council? Yes, please, Counsel Breyer.
A, a part of the declaration is the town manager shall report actions taken pursuant to this emergency declaration to the council and the public as soon as practicable. And that had happened great for a long period of time, and recently it seems there's been less communication, and that in conjunction with the loss of the weekly standard updates to the council. I've, I personally felt a little out of touch with what's happening in, in Town Hall and in town, and would like to see those resume as we renew the emergency declaration.
Okay, so the, the form of emergency does require town manager to report all actions taken pursuant to this emergency declaration to the council and to the public as soon as practicable, including ongoing updates to the town's website. Anyone else from the council wish to be heard? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, I am closing the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to adopt the declaration, the renewal of the declaration of emergency as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Okay. Now, this is the public hearing to discuss and act on our newly created BV liquor license. This BV liquor license, there is an applicant, Prince Ali Kebab, at 305 Soames Road. And we've, we've discussed this a little bit before, but now we're going to open the hearing on whether to award this license with or without restrictions to Prince Ali Kebab. So I'm opening that public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard from the public on this? Already heard from Mr. Haas. Anyone else? Yes, please, come forward.
Hello?
Good evening.
I'd just like to add my voice in support of Prince Ali Kebab, and that they're a fine addition to the community, and what we can do to help a family-owned small business succeed in these, especially in these times, is welcome. So, please support them.
Thank you. Could you just state your name?
Yes, it's Molly Lee.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard? Yes, please, come forward. Good evening.
My name's Nick Angert for Copperkettle Lane. My family and I live about half a mile from Prince Ali Kebab. They've been a wonderful addition to Hampton Meadows. Kids enjoy riding their bikes over there. We enjoy going and visiting with them, enjoying their delicious food. So I sense broad-based support. I'll keep my comments brief, but I'm in strong support of this.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from the council want to be heard on this? Yes, Counsel Costel.
Borrowing further discussion from the council, I think we've, we, we have discussed this matter. I would, I would move to grant a BVL license to Soames and DBA Prince Ali's Kebab of Soames Road in Barrington with the following restrictions, that alcohol may be served on weekdays, 5:30 PM and later, and on weekends and holidays, noon and later. Holidays are defined as holidays recognized by the state of Rhode Island upon which government offices are closed.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Yes, Counsel Breyer.
To just offer, for, for discussion, the possibility of 5:00, as opposed to 5:30. I understand it was agreeable to Prince Ali's Kebab to go to 5:30, but thinking about patrons showing up for an early dinner and wanting to have a beer with dinner and it's 5:10. And, you know, what's the reason? Well, because there's one piano lesson happening next door. Just doesn't seem like a fair restriction, because it's not just on the restaurant, it's on, you know, all of the patrons of the restaurant. If it's what's needed to, to approve it, I'll vote in favor, but I think, I think 5:00 would be better than 5:30.
Okay, so you're asking that he amend his motion. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm open to discussion, but, yeah.
I would, generally, as, as I will do, I, we want a clean vote on, on my motion, or I would be willing to vote on an amendment prior to voting on my motion, but I will not vote to amend something that has been agreed to by Prince Ali's, and also that is tailored specifically to meet the concerns of the Montessori School. Were it not for the school, and I agree with you, I mean, generally 5:00 PM would make sense, and that, and that's initially, that was, that was my, my thinking. But I do want to be sensitive to a business that has been in town for over 20 years, as I understand it, and has, has its own mission and serves our community well. I, I grant that it's unusual, and I grant that there may be some diners there between 5:00 and 5:30. I would hope that those diners would get a feeling of goodwill when they realize how Prince Ali's is making adjustments, and they can communicate that to benefit their business neighbors in the community. And so, I would, I certainly respect different views on this, but I would stick with the compromise that I've proposed, based on my conversations.
Yes, please.
The council can also keep in mind, this is a brand-new license, and so, in a year or two, when the license is up for renewal, the restrictions can be modified if the council deems appropriate at that time.
Could they be modified before then?
Were we just deemed that appropriate, or is it?
I think they could be modified before then, after notice and a public hearing.
Okay.
Are these on a calendar year?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Are they on a calendar year?
December 1st. So, their renewal will be up. They've got to... They're renewing, so they're going to, if you grant it, they'll have it now, but then they go into a renewal stage. So, at your November meeting, that's when you will have your victualling and liquor license, and it will be, the year starts December 1st.
But as I understand it, they could be modified prior to that?
Yeah, the council has the authority at any time to modify conditions after notice and a hearing.
Okay, Vice President Humm, please.
Yeah, just in case, before we move past this issue, I think what Mr. Breyer said is reasonable. I think it's a good suggestion, but I share Mr. Costello's concerns, especially given that this is a compromise between neighbors, and they have come to the neighborly thing to do, so I would hate for this to cause any sort of rift if the council were to take it upon itself to go around that compromise. So, I think what Ms. Owens said with respect to the fact that it is new, let's see how it plays out, and we can certainly revisit it. That's what I would suggest.
So, I am understanding that Council Costello is not accepting amendment, that he is open to a further motion after.
I am open to that, and depending on how this goes, I'm also open to reconsideration, especially if we have contact with the parties. I mean, I don't think what you're suggesting, Council Breyer, is at all unreasonable. Let me make that clear.
Okay.
May I ask a question of Council Costello? Does the Montessori school operate year-round? Are they on an academic calendar?
That's a very good question, and it has not come up during our discussions. I believe it's an academic calendar.
They have a summer school?
They do have a summer school. Okay.
Okay, so a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this motion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions, the motion carries. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for supporting a local business, too, the folks who came in to support Prince Ali Kebabs. And thank you again to Council Costello for meeting with the parties and really trying to work out what I believe is a very good compromise. The item on the agenda that I skipped was public comment. This is a three-minute statement. This is an agenda item for members of the public to speak regarding a topic that's not already on the agenda. If you do want to speak on this topic, please raise your hand, and then come forward and state your name and residency for the record. Does anyone want to be heard? Yes, Mr. Remishitis, please.
I don't think I need a microphone. Tom Remishitis, One Howard Street, Barrington, Rhode Island.
You do need the...
If you don't have a microphone, the recorder doesn't hear you.
But the camera. I'm not sure whether that works.
I'll sit. I have two things to bring up, if it's possible. So, we're going to be searching for a new town manager within the next couple of months. I'm wondering if, the way the housing market is at this point, that we extend the period or the living period or living area to maybe 15 miles radius. You know, I know there's a couple of people that might be putting in for it, that might fall into this category, but they might not, but I know a lot of them have established houses, and it's just a little much moving from one community to another at this time, seeing since our housing market isn't that. We don't have many houses left in town, and a lot of them that I don't think they could afford on a town manager's salary, but maybe with the retirement, he'd be fine. The other thing I want to bring back up is I've been on an ad hoc committee since well before COVID. It was a field acquisition and turf field project and everything else. So, I am not sure that the town council has appointed anybody else to take over for Councilor Boyagen or Councilwoman Clancy. So, we've been trying to get these meetings back in order with no avail, so I think we need somebody to take the lead. I've been talking to Ms. Bay, who was kind of like a lead person for the school committee, but we have nobody else from the council that is a liaison, and that they would need to be filled in. That's all I have.
Thank you. So, we will put that on our agenda for our next meeting. That's a good point. Ad hoc fields committee. And to answer your first question, that's not up to us, that's up to the voters, but the way that the charter is written is it says, "The town manager shall reside in town during their tenure." So, during their tenure, doesn't mean immediately upon appointment. And, you know, we certainly can be flexible about when that happens. We could also put on the next ballot to remove that as an item, but we can't by fiat cut out the charter.
I'm just thinking out loud, because we do have the town charter rule, one of them, where you don't have to work in the city or town that you live in, or you don't have to live in the city or town that you're working. So, I'm not sure if that falls under a different category for...
For our charter, a manager does have to reside during their tenure.
Okay. But I'm just trying to think...
During their tenure could mean a couple of years in, or it doesn't necessarily have to mean right away.
So, we clarify it, that's all.
Well, we're aware of the issue, and, you know, we're going to make clear that you don't have to move in on that day, because with the market the way it is, you know, it would be difficult for many people to find an open house. I know my daughter and son-in-law put bids on eight houses, I think, before they got one in Barrington. So, it's hard, and I think they bid over-market on each one.
My house across the street went well over-market.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard, sir? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Peter Schenkel. I'm a resident of Barrington, and thank you for all your service to the town. I sent you recently a letter urging that the East Bay Bike Path Bridges be reopened and be properly maintained. I just want to draw to your attention, make sure you saw it. In sum, I'm not impressed by the state's statement, evident statement now that it is going to construct new bridges. That is what they said two years ago when they closed the bridges. Also, I've looked at 10 years of inspection reports for these bridges, and I don't see any evidence that a structural engineer has found that they're in danger of collapse, and nor do I see evidence that there was an intelligent analysis of the risks of pushing schoolchildren onto those bridges on their bikes as a consequence of closing the bridges. I don't think there was any risk analysis there, and I think it's a very serious risk that they're undertaking with the lives of children, that I've seen biking on those bridges, and you probably have seen it, too. And in fact, I spent 10 minutes on the bridges, 15 minutes on each bridge, and within a matter of minutes, there's a 12-year-old girl biking across the bridge, just feet away from a car. I don't think it's a good situation, and I'd like to encourage the town council to be more firm in asking the state to explain itself, why it's doing what it's doing, what exactly it's going to do, and when exactly it's going to do it. I'm sure the town council has limited authority, and the town manager has limited authority to what it can do, but you do have the boldly pulpit, and you can represent the bikers and the ordinary citizens like me who like to go out for a Sunday ride and try to get some answers, because I just don't see evidence that this was necessary, and it seems to me like it's been bungled from day one. So, lastly, I'd like to point out, as I state in my letter, that I think the bridges are actually quite beautiful. That may not be an opinion that everyone shares, but I think that they're worthy of maintaining, if they can be maintained. It may be a far lesser cost than actually replacing them. Now, if you're facing a statement from RIDE that it's actually intent on doing this and it's going to do it, I want to see the money in the bank before we wait two more years, and then they say, "Well, we're not going to do it." I just think, and meanwhile, children are biking on those bridges. I just think it's a terrible situation. I'd like to encourage you to do whatever you can to address the matter. Thank you.
I will say that our town manager has been quite firm. If he's any firmer, I think the Department of Transportation will take out a restraining order on him. So, as has been our representative, Lyanna Kassar, there are some very strongly worded communications going back and forth. My suggestion to the public is, reach out to the governor yourself. Write letters to the governor, write letters to our reps so that they can show what's happening. We don't have any authority. We have some influence, and we are exercising that to our fullest. We could use your help. Okay. Anyone else want to be heard for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the facilities master plan. This is the, our school committee, together with the school department, have been working on this master plan, and I would ask that they come forward and tell us a little about that. We have our, Mike Missori, our superintendent here, Doug Fiore, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Finance.
Just have a very short presentation for you tonight. I'm Mike Missori, Superintendent of Schools in Barrington. With me is Doug Fiore, who is our Director of Administration and Finance, Kate Jessup and Sean Schmigo, both from Castle Booze Associates, who have helped us develop a facilities plan, and will be here tonight to present to you a brief introduction of the Stage One submission that we're going to be asking you to support to the Department of Education. I can remember being here years back when we did a Stage One submission to the town for your support to build a new middle school. We're not asking to build a new school, but we're asking for, which we'll explain, is a submission for us to start, complete a study, and to look at some long-range facility assessment needs. So, luckily, with the support of the town council and the taxpayers of Barrington, we built a state-of-the-art middle school. Part of our commitment, even during the construction process, was that we have five remaining schools that we're in charge of making sure are secure and safe for our students, and also provide the same educational opportunity that our students were receiving in a brand-new building. So, what we did was we created a facility subcommittee years back to start looking at our schools, and coincidentally, RIDE offered an opportunity for a grant for districts to submit proposals to conduct facility studies, which they would help fund. They also require now that all cities and towns submit a facilities plan to RIDE in order that they can keep track of how we're, again, creating a safe environment for students, and also starting to look at what we're doing in the future to make sure that students have more opportunities for teaching and learning in their buildings. So, we secured Castle Booze Associates to conduct a facility study, in which they've done a thorough walkthrough of our buildings, looking at two pieces, which is the immediate health and safety, but also with Kate's, conducted an assessment of what our future educational needs would be as far as looking at structures of how our classrooms are structured, how we use common rooms for either common planning or common student learning. But tonight, what we're looking at is to focus on the immediate piece, which is facilities needs. So, we've conducted, through this, conducted study of Castle Booze, we realized that there are some deficiencies in our building that need addressing. Part of our subcommittee's work is to take the study and prioritize what the most immediate needs are to make sure our buildings are safe, well-maintained, and that we're not down the road spending more money in repairing buildings than we are taking immediate actions to address the needs at hand. That's what's going to come out of the presentation tonight. So, Doug, I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
Thank you. I just had a brief comment, Mr. President. This is a prelude to the five-year capital plan, as Mr. Missori mentioned, which allows us to qualify for match funds, which has been a very successful initiative that the town has undertaken over the last few years, most notably recently with the middle school. So, without this plan in place, we're not eligible for those funds. So, anything going forward, over the next five or 10 years, it's imperative that we have this on file with RIDE, so we're eligible for that funding. And the important thing to know about tonight's presentation is it's just Stage One of a process that will take many years to complete, but this does not require a commitment on behalf of the town. It's basically an acknowledgement of need that we do have some deficiencies in our facilities that need to be addressed.
Okay. And so that we can be clear, again, for tonight, we're not being asked to commit to buying or paying for anything. What we're being asked to is basically to support the school's view of what the needs are. And the second piece of what you said was that this makes, in order to be eligible for RIDE reimbursement, we need to go through this step. The other thing that I wanted you to just talk a little about, and I don't know if it's in the presentation, is the 35% versus the 52%. Is that in the presentation?
If I can speak to it.
Okay, great. Please, Ms. Jessup.
Sure. So, right now, as many of you probably know, since you likely voted, the state of Rhode Island, we passed a $250 million bond to support the schools statewide. What that did was allow the Department of Education to offer incentives above and beyond your base rate, which is what each, the rate that each community that gets reimbursed. So, your base rate is 35% here. If you were to do repair work, sort of simple physical facility work, that's what you would be reimbursed from the state, assuming you have submitted one of these, Stage One, Stage Two, gone through the process. Because of that $250 million statewide bond, we are able to pursue additional reimbursements. So, it would go and allow up to an additional 17.5%, bringing Barrington to 52.5% reimbursement, so 50 cents on the dollar. In order to be eligible for those, you have to meet certain criteria. For example, some of the sort of easier ones to identify would be the safety and security upgrades, because that is, they're not expensive to do, but they're incredibly important, as we all know. Educational enhancements also provide you additional bonuses, as well as newer and fewer, and a few other that we will touch upon in the presentation, but essentially, what it does is you max out at 52.5%. These incentives start to expire in December of 2021. These incentives start to expire in December of 2023. There is, although we've all heard that there will be another potential $250 million bond that is not a guarantee, especially in the financial climate that we're in right now. So essentially, where we are is that those may start to expire in 2023, although that doesn't seem very soon. It actually is part of this process where this is the opportunity, not the dead last, but really sort of towards the tail end of when we will be able to pursue those. And depending on whatever solution the community comes to, and, you know, the town, the school committee, the community decide to move forward with, the reimbursement rate will change depending on the scope of those projects. So again, simple repair work is more of a 35% versus repair work that would also involve increasing the educational values in line with your district educational plan and the like, would hit up towards upwards of 52.5%.
Okay. Okay. I guess we're ready for the presentation. Thank you.
So my name is Kate Jessup. I'm an architect and an educational facility planner. What that means, because it's not a very common title, is that my work essentially exists at the intersection of facility and education. I am not an educator, but I, what I do is I sort of work with educators to understand how facility affects curriculum and vice versa, and try and find ways that we can create facilities for communities that enhance and positively impact the learning environment. So as you, if you were in the middle school before versus you are now, you can tell that the physical space is drastically different because the way we teach children is different. So I essentially want to talk to you today about the RIDE Stage One. In short words, it's the statement of need. It does not come up with a solution at all. What it does is identify what needs you have as a district and a community. So essentially, you look at all of your buildings. Obviously, there's not really a need at the middle school now, but, so we're focusing on the elementary schools and the high school, and we do both facilities assessments. So we look towards the engineering, to the architecture, to find out any sort of repair costs that go big picture into the schools. We also look at those educational components. How do we align space with the current pedagogy and what the pedagogy of the future may be, which is different than when these buildings were built in the 50s? These buildings do not necessarily facilitate that curriculum effectively. So part of the process, again, we need to look at a lot of different things throughout your district. We look at swing space, which will be important anytime there's a project. So where do the kids go to school if a school's under construction? And then there's these things called Priority One and Two deficiencies, and what that is, is anything that's really broken. So if you have a boiler that is beyond its useful life, that we know is going to need replacing, those fall into the must-do projects. So depending, again, on the scope that you decide to move forward with as a community, we do have to look at all of your schools and make sure there's nothing that's sort of falling apart or needs immediate repair as part of that, and that will be part of the project. That was also done during the middle school project. One important thing to know is that although there's nothing decided today, we will look towards solutions over the next coming months, assuming you support the submission of this document. And when we do that, we will look to come up with a solution, whatever solution that is. Only 50% of that dollar value that's determined at that point is required to be done, so it does, there is flexibility, even once you do have your memorandum of agreement with the state. And again, the four items you can see on the bottom, Safety and Security, Decrease Overcrowding, Educational Enhancement, and Replacement Candidates. Those are, that was identified by the state 2016 Jacobs Report as a replacement. You do have a building who meets that standard based on the amount of repair work identified at that time. So those are the four pieces that'll get you your bonuses up to 52.5%. Our studies have shown that you do have overcrowding issues in your schools already, where, which is impacting the learning environment, so you would qualify for, at minimum, all three of those, Safety and Security, Decrease Overcrowding, and Educational Enhancements, likely with any project work that you move forward with. So the next slide is just a list of the requirements. I won't necessarily go through them all. I'm happy to answer any questions on it. You can see there's no options in this list. What it is, is essentially all of the data that will help us come up with whatever solution it is in the future. So we sent our teams in, they looked at all of the equipment, all the boilers, the roof quality, the windows, so just to get an understanding of like, okay, how much would it cost to repair these buildings? And that gives you a baseline for, well, what if we then want to solve some other issues from an educational standpoint? Again, we look at how does, how do the buildings support or not support the long-term educational vision? Although this RIDE process is a five-year process, we're working with the district on what is the sort of the 20-year plan? We don't want to be doing something in the next five years that goes against what may be, you know, frugal or the right choice educationally for the long term of the district. Moving forward, just running you through some of the things that we've worked on already, and I've mentioned most of it already, we have done, we've been to almost weekly, I'd say, facilities, committee meetings, sort of going through, working with the group that was developed as part of the middle school project. So we're sort of, they're already boots on the ground, helping us to understand the community better. We have lots of data that has been compiled over the past 20 years of studies done by other firms, other surveyors, and information that we sort of have to go through. We have met with all of the principals toward the buildings during the summertime when the students were not in. We've looked at sort of some of the challenges, particularly with COVID, that the principals had to deal with, distancing and the like in smaller classrooms that were developed in the 1950s, which were standard. We looked at all the facilities from an engineering standpoint, and we've been playing around with sort of some concepts, but nothing has been decided at this point. Most importantly for this group to know is that through the fall, we will be developing a schedule of community engagement. That is going to range from everything from working with the students on what their ideal school looks like, what types of elements are in it, working with students, but also you as representatives of the town, we would urge you to participate as much as you can. Same for the school committee, we've sort of invited them to understand sort of why the need is there educationally for some who may not have children in the district, who may be sort of concerned about how this may impact them personally, but also to understand what this allows Barrington educators to do should work move forward. Moving forward, this is very small fun, I apologize for that. We do have a copy here, if you don't have a copy of it. The school, the, the, the Facility Committee created a motion based on the goals that they wanted to see in whatever solution was developed in the future. They made a motion to submit that to the school committee. That was presented to the school committee a few weeks ago, two weeks ago? And they sort of agreed with the motion, and we're sharing this with you now because I believe, and I think this is coming from you, we're looking for you to support the general concept of the project. Again, there are no solutions, this is not tying any one thing to it, but you can see that there are a number of different items, and I'm happy to read them if that would be helpful. The motion is to prioritize the work at the elementary schools over the next five years, along with high-priority deferred maintenance items throughout the district and work at the high school. Scope of work may include new construction, addition renovation, repairs, and educational facility updates reflecting the district's long-term educational vision and results of the XQRI investigations that are currently ongoing. General goals for the project to include, but not limited to, provide classroom quantities and sizes, small learning communities, which include student and teacher collaboration spaces. Provide future-focused educational space, including but not limited to interdisciplinary areas for instruction, small and large group instruction spaces, social-emotional support spaces, indoor-outdoor learning connections, authentic learning opportunities, breakout and project areas. Provide dedicated enrichment spaces for art, music, physical education, STEM, technology in each elementary school. Create dedicated and appropriate intervention and special education spaces. Align grade configuration with teaching and curriculum models. Create district-wide equity for all Barrington students. Align space sizes to the RIDE basic educational plan. Upgrade safety and security features, protocols, and technology in all schools. Create sustainable and energy-efficient buildings with decreased operating costs. Consider opportunities for development of parks, recreation, and/or other amenities at sites considered surplus after implementation of plan. Improve traffic safety, student drop-off and pickup, and multimodal transportation access, and to receive the maximum RIDE reimbursable, reimbursement. So that's the, essentially, the charge that we have received to move forward with from the Facility Committee, as well as the School Committee. I will say, just my own personal opinion, this is a fantastic set of goals to work towards for the long term of all the students in Barrington. Barrington is known for its public education, and it's wonderful that you have this opportunity to sort of go back and continue to work towards, you know, physical facilities that are new and innovative to support what's already happening in the classrooms. The teachers are doing fantastic. It's of note that this has nothing to do with neglect. The facilities are in great condition. Buildings just are only meant to last 50 years. So when you think about that these were built in 1950s, they're pushing seven years old. You know, so we're going to work through all of that in the fall, and again, I encourage you to participate, but that's the motion that was put forth by the school committee that the school committee, the district is looking for your support on. I'll leave it to you if you want to add anything.
I think Kate did a great job summarizing it. What's important is, one, addressing immediate needs, like I mentioned before, health and safety, but we also built a state-of-the-art middle school. And so our goal also was, we have five schools that are remaining in the district, from elementary to high school, and we want to make sure that our students are provided the same opportunities that our middle school students are when the three years that they're in the middle school. So they have HVA systems, security, they have classroom designs which allow for collaboration learning and 21st century learning. And those are the same opportunities that all our students should have as they go through Barrington. We have the best educational system in the state, not the country, but we want to make sure that our students are also in the best possible learning environment as possible. We want to do so in a fiscally responsible way. That's through this process, we're able to capture the maximum amount of reimbursement we can from the state, and over a long period of time, through sessions that Castle Booze is going to hold, we have, it's an opportunity to educate the community on what our goals are, but also get feedback from the community on what their goals are as far as how do we jointly envision our school system in years to come.
And was it fair to say that in addition to identifying the goals, you're also going to be identifying the opportunities presented by this bond? Whereas in the past, if we wanted to do a particular thing, as long as it was immediate health and safety, we could be pretty assured we'd get the 35% reimbursement. This provides an opportunity, if we go into certain other areas, to get more of a reimbursement. So those opportunities will be available to us?
And some of that also came from questions that come up every year regarding capital reserve and how it's spent in the school system. So part of the facilities study that we began even prior to securing Castle Booze, is the purpose of the Facility Subcommittee, was to look at those priorities, to set those priorities. So when we use capital reserve money for immediate health and safety, we also looked at what would the reimbursement we would get back, the 35% from the state, and how would we invest that in future projects? What we needed to do, though, was establish priorities. So for the taxpayers, it was a matter of being able to set, these are our goals, this is why we're doing it, and this is why we're spending the money on it, which is something we really didn't have in the past. We made the best decisions possible about securing immediate health and safety. We addressed many of them before the middle school was built. We had to go through that Stage One process before we could bond the middle school, but in the next piece, as Kate mentioned, and that we've mentioned, is that we know that there's some significant facility needs that need to be addressed sooner than later in the district.
Right. Now, Doug, if I can ask you, in terms of our middle school, that's done and dusted, or does this have any impact on our middle school?
If there's a question about, I'd like to brought that up, because we often say incentives that are stored in the elementary places, we have the same ones that we're aggressively pursuing as we close out the middle school project. So some of the original budgets that we used for revenue coming in to offset those bonds, hopefully, we're going to exceed that by attaining some of these thresholds that we've been shooting for as we close out the project with RIDE. There's actually an audit at the end of the construction, which we're fast approaching, that will get some answers from them on how high we've qualified in that reimbursement threshold.
So do you think that audit will be done by year-end? By December 31st?
Possibly by the end of the calendar year. I'm not sure if they have a backlog on doing that, but I'm pretty sure that that's a reasonable expectation.
So the reason I ask that is because I think, I think it's important to, and I don't mean to digress too much from kind of the future back to the past, but I think it's important to point out that although the middle school was a really big nut for us, it was just a huge cost. The net cost is substantially lower and actually may continue to shrink as we get some reimbursements, some that were anticipated from the beginning and others that we didn't anticipate but became opportunities later. Is that fair?
That's a great observation, because the legislation for the bonding didn't exist at the state level when we passed our bond locally. Subsequent to that, these additional incentives became available. We weren't originally included, I'm not sure if you recall the history of that, but we aggressively lobbied, went through our delegation, and we were ultimately included with that. But I think the lesson is, you're not sure what's going to happen going forward. That's why our preference is to lock in now on some of these incentives before they sunset and are no longer available, because we don't know what the next, you know, session of the General Assembly is going to do and make, you know, they may stay, they may disappear, we just don't know.
Thank you. Did you guys finish your presentation? I'm sorry I interrupted. I wanted to give everybody on the council a chance to ask questions.
Yes, absolutely.
Please, anyone? Nope? Yes, Councilor Costello?
Every industry has standards. When we communicate with the public, when this discussion gets underway, we'll be looking to ground a lot of what you said. It makes a lot of sense. But when we talk about future pedagogy, for example, future pedagogy, for example, where do you, where is that grounded? Like, where can we, how do we know where in 20 years, something, education is going, and we can say, hey, this is something we really need for the school? What should we be looking to? Obviously, as a consultant, that's one source, but it'd be, you know, if you're in one field, you might have ANSI standards, another one, you might have transportation standards. Every field has that. What are we looking to in education?
Sure. So generally, that information is not coming from me. It's coming from the educational leadership, who are thinking about certain things. One thing that I have been engaged on as, after this Assistant Superintendent sort of clued me in on it, was the XQRI, which is a statewide understanding of what our high schools in Rhode Island in the future are going to be, what are we expecting kids to learn, and what are they, what skills are they going to have? It comes from a curriculum standpoint. So from that, you know, they're currently in the process of these meetings where they're trying to understand, all right, well, you know, rather than sort of having students all know the same facts, we're learning about critical thinking, collaboration. A great example is trying to work as a team for the concrete canoe. How does that float? How, you know, but what if it sinks? That child doesn't fail. They're learning the skills that are important, which is iteration and authentic learning, and they're using their hands and triggering different learning capabilities within their minds. So that's, that's really sort of where education is moving, from what I understand. And so you can see then how smaller classrooms in the 50s, which were designed for stand-and-deliver instruction, where teachers stood in the front, in front of a blackboard, and the children memorized what the teacher was saying. That's sort of, we're very divergent from that now, and it's because we're looking towards businesses. What are these business leaders looking for? It would be a great opportunity to meet with the folks who just were appointed to the Economic Council. What do they want to see out of students coming out of the schools? We're not just looking for college. This is college and career. We're looking at, you know, what, what, all of this ties into a greater discussion, and that's really happening at a national level. It's happening sort of local here, but as a result of what's happening big picture. So we look to the educators to help us, guide us. That's also, they will be guiding the community through the process so that the community understands that, you know, this isn't sort of hogwash, that we just want these big fancy open buildings. You know, there's reasons for a lot of it. For example, your middle For example, your middle school had amazing opportunities that most schools didn't have because it had breakout spaces during COVID. So that was able to really provide six feet where, in other districts, some of the kids just couldn't go to school because they couldn't get the kids far enough apart. So all of these things play into it. We look at, you know, the child's brain, brain psychology. We look for professional organizations like Harvard and everything. And that's what sort of gets us to the place where we then can only surmise what the kids are going to need. And we create something that's flexible and adaptable. So if we learn something new in the future, the building will be able to provide for whatever that learning is. And that's really important. You know, big masonry-heavy buildings aren't very flexible. So we need to move to something where classes can be combined into groups that it can survive whatever changes and challenges education brings in the future.
Yeah, I think when you come up with, and when we put forth solid standards, we're not talking about a luxury here. We're talking about areas of need. Need meets need. And I think in order to have that community discussion, it's going to have to be based on those terms. And that's understandable from a taxpayer perspective, for sure. So that's what I was really looking for. I appreciate that. The other micro-level concern, which, I see the word asbestos and I jump, you know, and you see asbestos tiles in all except the middle school and so-ems?
Yes.
And I don't mean to zero in on a detail. I know we're talking about a broad plan, this is the very beginning, but just given that that's in your report, is that an immediate safety issue, or what does that mean?
No. Asbestos, you know, when it was created, was a wonderful insulator. As long as it's encapsulated, it is perfectly safe. The district has gone through great measures to make sure that it is safe. It is looked at every year annually to make sure. So there's no immediate health risk. However, that's why swing space is on the list, so any repair work that's done in the school. Best practice is to have students relocated away from where you're stirring up those particles during the construction process, so you move them to another location or into portable classrooms, so that there's no possibility of contamination during the construction process. You know, again, that would be all depending and completely determined by the scope at which you want to, but, you know, there is hazardous materials in all of the schools except for the middle school.
Great. I appreciate that. I know, and again, I didn't mean to narrow in on a narrow issue, but I know somebody, you see the word asbestos, it's going to blink out at you.
It's a trigger word, yes.
And anyone who reads this is going to jump at that. Thank you.
Vice President Humm, please.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I think this sounds like a wonderful opportunity, you know, and it's good to hear that we don't have solutions yet. This is an opportunity to kind of look into those solutions. I think this is a really good idea. It's proactive, which is important. The only thing that I would suggest, you know, kind of moving forward, if, you know, you're looking for feedback on this, is to get as much community input as you can, you know, not just have a school committee meeting or a town council meeting, but have more than one, have several, have off-meetings in between, workshops, just the more opportunity that people have to understand what's going on, give input. Not all input's going to be accepted. I think everybody recognizes that, but, you know, I think people do want to make sure that people are hearing them and at least have an opportunity to voice that. I think something like that, you know, could go a long way. And Ms. Jezebel, I was encouraged by what you said about hearing from the EDC and, you know, maybe some other committees. I think that's a really good idea, and it sounds like you're on the right track, but I would definitely build that into the plan. So, thank you.
Absolutely. I think I'm going to use COVID as an excuse. When we were brought on board, we were at the end of the school year. We weren't really meeting in person. We were doing most things virtually. Now that there is, although, we'll see how it plays out, we want to have people in person, engaged. We know that already we've had discussions where we're going to have some evening meetings, some during the day, because we want to make sure that we don't miss someone because they're a working parent in the evenings, or that they don't have childcare. We want to make sure we're able to sort of meet with as many people as possible so that we can get a true, you know, understanding of what the community is looking for. And if they're concerned or worried, you know, we're there to answer questions and to explain everything as well. Often, in meetings like this, no one wants to ask questions because they're scared to do so. So this is one. Shaun, as a resident, I joke, he's going to get pulled over at the grocery store all the time now. But I think it's an important part, is that we're just present through this and that everything is as transparent as possible, because there is a lot of morning pieces. And I think knowing that, you know, obviously, there is a result that will affect the community regardless of what is going to happen.
Great, thank you.
Councilor Brier.
I'm just curious what support from the council looks like. What exactly is asked of us now? Is it just, you know, a motion to vote in support? Or is there something more formal? Does it, is it required as part of the submission to the state that councils discuss it? What's exactly our role in this process?
Sure. So we are preparing a document which essentially goes in on the 15th, which is sort of all of this data that we collected. It does need signature by a municipal representative. There are three documents that need signing from the school committee, the superintendent, municipal representatives, and that, those are really the formal grouping of the, this school building committee, which is a formal group that will make recommendations to the school committee about the project moving forward. There are members sort of across the board. Some are from the city side, some are community members, some are architects that live in Barrington. So it hits a lot of different stakeholder groups, so it's a very varied group. We also have a statement of interest, which essentially tells the Department of Education, signed by Mr. Misori, that says we are going to be interested in joining the process of the School Building Authority. Again, no solutions, just that, you know, we welcome working together in the future. And then there's a compliance certificate that says, essentially, as a community, whatever you have to decide to do, you will agree to certain things that really have to do with sustainability, that have to do with making sure you're hiring women business enterprises, minority business enterprises, that you're sort of following all the legal procurement requirements. So those are the three things that require signatures, not necessarily from this group, but in general, from the representation from the town. So I believe that it can be just a motion of support and that signature.
So if we were to make a motion to support the efforts of the Barrington School Committee, the School Building Committee, and the Barrington Public Schools with respect to the Ride necessity of school construction, stage one submission, that would do it?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. And in terms of a signature from us, do you need a signature before our next meeting? And if so, what is the document that we would need to sign?
They're right here.
Wednesday, right? Submitted on Wednesday?
Yes, please.
And the signature essentially implies that we're in a relationship together, you know, that this is not sort of something that, this is, we're all on board for this, the community to move forward with this.
So they can make sure that school committees don't come up with these projects that then are not going to be allowed to happen?
That nobody can pay for.
We never discussed that.
Yeah. It's happened.
Do you want to take a look at this and see if you're comfortable with it? So before we vote, and as my colleagues are looking over those documents, just make a suggestion. When you talk about security, you have a great resource in our town manager, who was the head of force protection for the Navy at the Pentagon. It makes sense to just talk to him. I know you talk to him every day, Mike. It seems like every time I'm in there to talk to him, he's calling you or you're calling him. So just a suggestion to rely on his expertise. And I do have his cell phone number, so after he retires, you can still call him.
Yeah, from the safety and security standpoint side, we use national evidence-based solutions, but we also work very intimately with the folks here, everything from fire and police, you know, and anyone else who needs to be involved in the conversation, to make sure that, you know, we're doing best practice and thinking, again, beyond sort of what may be to what needs to be. Not only from the standpoint of the worst sort of offenses that can happen, but also thinking about things like bullying and making sure that we are designing facilities that don't have those nooks and crannies where people get lost.
Great.
It comes down to developing a traffic system that allows for safe drop offs and pickups. So it's all encompassing.
Right.
Endeavor changing. Endeavor changing.
Ever changing.
Yeah. Okay, so I will make a motion that the Barrington Town Council support the efforts of the Barrington School Committee, the School Building Committee, and the Barrington Public Schools with respect to the Ride necessity of school construction, stage one submission. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. And then, we have been presented with two documents. One is a letter to Dr. De Silva, the school construction coordinator, and that essentially lists our school committee, our committee members in here. And then another is to Mr. Carino, Mario Carino, who's the School Building Authority Director. And that is sort of the cover letter for our submission and what we intend to do. So I will make a motion that, do you want it from, you've got it from Gina Bay. Do you want it from Jim Cunha, or from me, or whatever your preference is? Okay.
I would probably, I'd suggest, Mr. Carroll, if maybe you sign it, given that this will be a council vote, it might, you know, it kind of carries that force.
Does anyone want to make a motion authorizing me to sign these two documents as presented?
So moved.
Is there a motion made and seconded for the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions? That motion carries. Thank you very much. I appreciate your work on this.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to also recognize that Chairperson Day is here in the audience tonight in support. So on behalf of Barrington School Committee, the Building Committee, and all of Barrington Public Schools, we want to thank you for your support.
Everybody okay to keep going? Okay. Next item on our agenda is to discuss and act on the composition of the ad hoc Watson Avenue Development Committee. There's a memo in our packet that lists the committee that was appointed by our town manager. So the question is not, the question is whether we choose to appoint a committee ourselves or just accept. We don't need to endorse it, but we can choose to do nothing, and if we do nothing on this, then we already have a committee in place that our town manager has put in place. He's also noted that the committee would be subject to and compliant with the Open Meetings Act, so there'd be plenty of involvement. I'll just say that I worked with Phil Hervey, who is proposed to be the chair of the Managers' I, boy, I was on planning board more than 12 years, and this is, you know, right in his wheelhouse. Obviously, he's the town planner, and so he's familiar with all of this kind of thing. But in terms of public engagement, Phil has been doing this forever. He's, when we did our initial comprehensive community plan, Phil went on a roadshow to the different schools. He had, he had different proposals out, and people put stickers on and listed what they were, and then we were able to kind of read through that. We took input in that way for the cop plan. So he's definitely the right person to be kind of leading the public engagement aspect of this, along with the other folks on that committee. So that, my view is that I don't think we need to do anything. I think that the manager has proposed the right folks, but I'll open that up to discussion.
I have a question, or I guess comment, specifically after our conversation about the Senior Services Advisory Committee today, and how we had two wonderfully qualified candidates for the second alternate, and knowing that we'll have some potential turnover. It seems to me that I'd like to see two representatives from the Senior Services Advisory Council. I know that the planning board has two, and the Housing Board of Trustees, but if we're talking about senior services or potentially senior housing being used in that space, I think it would be helpful to have two. Otherwise, I think it's a terrific group of folks who are going to come up with some great ideas.
Vice President Humm.
Yeah, thank you. I think the composition looks great. Ms. Conway's addition sounds like a good one to me as well. Just want to note that I appreciate that this particular committee will be subject to the Open Meetings Act. I think that's important, you know, for transparency and potential public involvement. And that's it.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilor Brier.
So along the lines of both of those, I think members of the community at large would be valuable additions. I had noted somebody who's representing the neighborhood itself and kind of only wearing that hat. I'm not sure if anybody who's currently on the list is in the neighborhood, but I think that's important to have them as a stakeholder. And also, somebody who's representing seniors, not necessarily part of the Senior Services Advisory Board, but a senior in the community who may access the housing there. And then to Vice President Humm's point of it being bound by the Open Meetings Act, I think that is critical. And aligned with that, I think the weight of having this be a council-established committee, I think, is important. I think we initiated this process by the council, voted on by the community. I think with the elected representatives of the community leading that charge, I think should stay aligned with that. So I think that we should establish this. I don't have any issue with the folks included. I think it's a good list of people with a few additions.
So because, I guess the difference, particularly the difference between a town managers' committee and a council-appointed committee is Open Meetings Act anyway, we could just vote to endorse this committee, and that would make it subject to the Open Meetings Act by law, right?
I think the manager had intended to make it subject to the OMA anyway, so...
If we make a motion to endorse this with the proposed change...
That makes it even more likely that it would legally be considered a committee subject to the Open Meetings Act. But as you know, we always advise err on the side of transparency post-meetings and agendas as if it is considered a public body.
We do actually have a, Ronnie Phipps is on the planning board, and I think she's also a part of the, there's a group of seniors I know who approached me, and they've talked about cottage housing and things. I'm not sure if Ronnie is in that. I think she might be. But, you know...
I'm not sure.
Maybe you can just check on that, Jim.
Yeah, as far as the public input, the goal here, we'll hire a development consultant that will lead us through, just as you mentioned Phil has done in the past. Phil will chair this thing. But there's going to be numerous opportunities for public input. I'm not sure, based on the size of this committee and who's represented, that we need... I'm not sure, based on the size of this committee and who's represented, that we need to get public representation on the committee. I think we have public representation. They happen to be members of bodies and commissions and boards in the town. And certainly, no one in the community is going to lack the opportunity to weigh in on this thing, so.
Right. So I, I think we can, so Counsel Conway has suggested an additional Senior Services Advisory Committee. Counsel Breyer suggested public, members of the public, and there certainly are on there, and a person who is in the, in the neighborhood. And I don't know if they're in there, but I think I, I have a suggestion to address that. I would like to propose that Counsel Conway act as our liaison to this committee. We can, we could, I'll make that a motion, but maybe we should address the composition first.
So I, I would say especially if Counselor Conway is the liaison, which I think makes sense, then it's very important to have a member of the public represent the neighborhood so that she is not in the position to both represent the neighborhood and represent the town as a whole.
Please, come forward.
Laura Young, 14 men in a row. So I'm activist, I think people know, with, well, both the Senior Advisory Committee and the Barrington Village, which is a volunteer organization for older folks in our town, to kind of support them remaining in the community. And I do, I'm aware that the next year's chair, Susan McCallmont, is not connected to the Senior Advisory Board, does live in the neighborhood, and maybe, I have no idea, she's a busy lady, whether she'd be able to, but it occurs to me that if you're looking to add, you know, that kind of a person, I could recommend her.
So, so Jim, would two additional people make it too unwieldy for you?
No, I don't think so. I, I'm not sure how I'm going to get the member of the public. Cast a wide net and see what I can scoop up? I mean...
Well, I think, I mean, I think these are already members of the public. I think what Counsel Breyer was saying is somebody who's sort of specifically and unaffiliated with other aspects, a member of that community, which would be, Susan McCallmont would qualify, and I'm sure there are others. So that would be one, and then the additional senior services person. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we endorse the Barrington Town Managers ad hoc Watson Avenue Development Committee with the additions mentioned, the two additions mentioned, and that we appoint Counsel Conway as the liaison to that committee for the Barrington Town Council.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? Counsel Breyer.
Can we add to that and that it be bound by the Open Meetings Act?
Okay, we certainly can. Anything that we appoint is bound by the Open Meetings Act. Any...
So, so we are appointing this committee then?
We are. We're endorsing it, so that makes it, he's already said he would, but if...
As a matter of principle, I've already made that commitment to you.
Yeah. So, okay, so motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you. And thanks in advance. I know this is going to be a lot of hard work. Okay, next item on our agenda is to discuss an act on the selection process for the probate judge. Jim, if you can kind of take us through that.
Yeah, Marvin Homenoff has backed out on us only after only 32 years in the job. He's going to be spending half of his year in Florida, and he's done a remarkable job for us, as you probably read in the Barrington Times' well-deserved article. That's as of December 31st. So what we'd like to do is to put out feelers and an application process to attorneys that are in town or out of town, and present you with that list of resumes that you can narrow down and get to an interview process, just like we do with all the other selections. The only difference is it's not my selection, it's going to be your selection. And typically, we default to residents of Barrington. On a separate issue, if you look at the backside of that memo, the second page, you can see that we probably need to address salaries at some point. I don't think we need a huge increase, but we are certainly at the bottom rung, and we want equality. I don't, I don't think anyone's doing it for the money, but we certainly want to compensate someone adequately. And the probate judge in particular is, can be a very gruesome job and very difficult, time-consuming job. So I think that one, and we'll take a look at municipal judge as well with next year's salaries increases and next year's budget.
Vice President Hum, please.
Thank you. I have two questions. The first is, and I know, Mr. Cunha, you just talked about the salary and how that might work. I don't know if this particular notice on page one of the memo has gone out. That mentions a site band of 2,500. The next page indicates a salary of 3,000.
Yeah, I know, I annotated that. I think it's 3,000. Is that correct, Mary?
Yes, he's at 3,000.
Okay, so the memo is incorrect. So we'll correct that.
Yeah, I just wanted to reconcile the two.
The reason we did that is because we had a municipal judge who is at 2,600, and so I discussed it with Jim, that you're bringing in another brand-new judge that hasn't had the experience in this court, in the probate court, and is that fair to the existing municipal judge? That's why.
And, and...
That's why we have it.
No, I appreciate that explanation. And frankly, I have no issue with either of those two numbers. I just wanted to, just wanted to note the difference and just kind of check on why. 2,500 makes sense to me for the reasons that you mentioned, Mr. Sisto.
Yeah.
And then the only other thing that I'll mention is, you know, perhaps we can add to the, the job description or ideal candidate, just probate-related experience. I think it would probably come with the territory, and in the review process, it would be fleshed out anyway, but, you know, perhaps to at least narrow the pool of applicants.
Any, any other comments from the council?
Yeah, just, just, what is the typical, what are the typical number of hours talking a year for this kind of service? Just to get a sense for what someone's getting paid for in terms of the amount of time that this commitment is.
It varies. I mean, he, he's had one case over the last couple of years that has been extensive with an awful lot of time and effort that has since been passed to solicitor or CILLO because of a, because of a conflict of interest. But Mary can probably answer better than I, but typically, it's two, two to three hours once a month, but there's a lot of background research behind it as well, that, you know, before he rules on the cases and, you know, reviewing the statements and the, and the inputs. Mary?
So typically during the year, the number of estates that come through the court are about 80, and then the average docket is about nine. So some case, sometimes a month, I can have 16 cases for the judge, or it could be as little as five. So that's why we averaged it out to nine. But then there are times when he has to have temporary guardianships, so it's, you know, he, he has to meet, usually he'll meet in his office in Providence because it's closed for the attorneys, or he'll have a special meeting here. He will also have special meetings because the case is so extensive that he has to meet on another day because it could be well over an hour to an hour and a half, such as the case that town manager Cunha was talking about. So it, it all depends, but there's, it's a lot of work for them, yeah.
And forgive me for asking this, but I, since there's no, no clerk on staff, no law clerk on staff, does, does the, does he have access to your, the solicitor's office as a de facto clerk, or is he doing his own research typically on these things?
He has staff, the, the town clerk is his staff, and Mary sets it all up and gets it wrong. I don't know if...
But in terms of legal research? Not like in terms of legal research. If he needs an issue of law, he can't turn to a clerk, as a judge would do in another courtroom typically, and say...
I think, yeah, and, and Mike is also a probate judge for another community in addition to being a solicitor, as you know. And the probate judges, my understanding is unless they're a solo practitioner, there is someone in their office, and, and that, so the duties would fall to whoever they're professionally associated with. And I know that they consult each other, you know? There is a society of Rhode Island probate judges. So I think in practice, they can call either the solicitor, if that person, as Mike does, has experience in the probate field, or rely on their own offices, law clerks.
So, so in practice, does the probate judge typically farm out a research assignment to the solicitor's office? Is that commonly done, or do we...
I think typically, they try to keep as much of the work in-house.
Okay.
You know, and maybe only in conflict of interest cases would they call upon the solicitor to help out with something.
Okay, I just want to get a sense of what responsibilities there are, given, you know, that we're talking salary and how much is appropriate and that sort of thing. Thanks.
Vice President Hum, please.
Thank you. Just one other question with respect to process. I see from the memo that the review of resumes begins September 24th. Is there like a cutoff date from when resumes would be received, or is there a, like a timeline in terms of the actual selection process?
Yeah, I think our original, our original date was September 24th. That seems kind of close in to me, and I'd like to extend it out and present you with a list prior to the November meeting. And we can either discuss it in November or make a selection in December. That'd be a better timeline, I think.
Any, any other questions or concerns? We have a, a motion prepared to authorize, let me just... to authorize the town, do I hear a motion to authorize a town clerk to advertise the position of probate judge and provide the town council with a vetted list of applicants for selection? Motion's been made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions, that motion carries. Okay. Next on our agenda is to discuss an act on community after COVID. This is Vice President Hum has asked, and we asked our committees to kind of come up with some ideas on this. I will tell you that one of my committees, I think, misunderstood it, and they thought it was just suggestions in general, and so we had a lot of, a lot of ideas that weren't necessarily connected to COVID. They were good ideas, and we will chase them down, but I, I think the focus was going to be on what lessons learned from COVID and so on. So if you want to tell us a little more about that?
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a, that's a good backdrop in terms of what this was looking for. I didn't intend to ask for this on this month's agenda for any, any specific action items or final decisions coming out of today. It's, it's primarily for discussion purposes with the goal of at some point, there will be decisions in terms of actionable items that the town can take moving forward from what we've learned, what, what we did well, what we didn't do well, et cetera. I agree with you. I read some of them, and I said, interesting. I don't know if some of these came out of COVID or not, but I, I think they were interesting nonetheless, even those that may, may or may not be directly related to COVID or things that the town could probably consider. You know, one, and I think the, the most actionable, I guess, the most actionable item that, that I noticed that came out of these discussions was from the planning board with respect to a, a draft ordinance that they had put forward with respect to outdoor dining. I know that's something that, that is, is of interest to me, and, you know, it's something that I'd like to pursue with respect to council review. I don't know that there was enough time between the issuance of that draft ordinance and today to make any decisions on that, but perhaps for the next meeting, we can revisit that particular item. But otherwise, I wanted this on the agenda to keep fresh on our minds, and, you know, we just extended the emergency ordinance again because people thought we'd be in the clear, and apparently, we're not. So we're not after COVID yet, even though that's, that's what the agenda item is referred to. I think it's important to look ahead. I think it's also important for us to focus on, you know, some of the concerns now. So what, what I would suggest is, you know, we, we keep this as a continued discussion item, and one thing that I'd ask folks to consider is, I noticed from all the good work that the boards did, that, you know, now we need somebody to piece together these pieces of a puzzle, and I don't know if that's a good use of, of the community's time for us to do that sitting up here with the five of us. I'm just brainstorming here, but I don't know if something like an ad hoc committee would be appropriate for something like this, so that there is somebody who can actually piece together the plan and maybe come up with an action plan that the council at some point can consider and, and try to vet and make a decision on. I'm open to other suggestions. I don't, I don't know if that's the suggestion or not, but I'll stop there and see if anybody else had any impressions from the, the comments from the various boards. And again, I want to thank the boards for, for taking a look at it and, you know, and really thinking this through.
So one option is to have an appointee from certain boards. We could do it from every board, but then it would be a very large committee. And I know that, for example, the Juvenile Hearing Board didn't really deal with much that had to do with COVID. But, but certainly, like, the, the planning board would, and maybe we can come up with a list of boards and ask them to provide a representative, and in that way, you know, we could have them, their, their suggestions related to COVID.
And, and apologize for interrupting, but, you know, another thought that I had in mind is I also didn't intend to limit the, the board's discussion to just one meeting and say, okay, guys, what do you have tonight? And then they come up with some ideas, and then they move on. I think it's something that's important to be a continued discussion on everyone's minds with respect to their, you know, whatever their charge is, you know, keep thinking about it within your, your charge of your particular board. You know, what suggestions do you have as we continue to move forward? I, I think that's something that could be helpful. So, you know, when I suggest an ad hoc committee, it doesn't need to be immediate. It's something that can be kind of further fleshed out among the boards. Maybe they need a subcommittee in the meantime. I also don't think it should last that long and kind of be a, a never-ending process, but those are just some ideas that I had. And, you know, I think it's important. I think it's something that we don't want to lose sight of, but easily could. So...
We could also task a, an existing committee. So Planning Board came up with the idea of an ordinance relating to outdoor dining, and that, that strikes me as a great lesson learned from this, and it's a wonderful opportunity for our dining establishments generally. But they, also, Planning Board is a committee that has a lot of other inputs. For example, they do the capital improvement program, so they deal with things going across the board in terms of capital improvements as they may relate to other committees. So we could ask them to present us with their, their best. Just brainstorming, as you say.
I, I think it might help to add some formality to the process, where you have a commission, like, there's some confusion among my commissions about, okay, is this really focused on remediating what has happened during COVID? really focused on remediating what has happened during COVID, or what we've learned from COVID and applying these lessons to a post-COVID world? And should we come up with something formal, or are we brainstorming? And sometimes you'll get things that, you know, one person thinks of this, or one person thinks of that. It may help to give the, the, the boards and commissions more directive. And, and having a deliberative process that would produce a result from a board and commission, even before you get to the ad hoc stage. And I'm wondering if that would be something that, and I'm trying to keep, especially when I speak with them, I'm trying to keep with, with Vice President Humm's vision on this. And so to the extent that I can use language to clarify that and have a unified approach to all of our boards and commissions, that might be helpful. And maybe even formalizing that process. We can't force them to pass the motion, right? But, but we can certainly suggest that this would be a way that, that, that we could, we could take some, some ideas, and maybe an ad hoc commission, or maybe the, the council itself would address those ideas. So I don't know if you have thoughts on that? And I'd address that to, I'm sorry, I should go through the council president. I would wonder if Vice President Humm has thoughts on that, given that this was his innovation.
And you can certainly feel free to talk to me directly.
I do, on most occasions.
No, thank you.
I'm standing in the way. So, sorry.
No, I, I appreciate the confusion, and, and the answer to all that is yes. It's, it's anything and everything. It's what if this happens again? It's what lessons did we learn that, you know, and again, using the outdoor dining as an example, that's something that we didn't really have before. The town pivoted during COVID and had what seemed to be successful outdoor dining, because it was out of necessity, because restaurants couldn't have patrons within the, the actual brick and mortar establishment. And then, you know, people realized this might be a good idea. Whether it is or isn't, maybe we'll discuss it at some point in the future. But, so that's an example of a lesson learned. An example of what did we learn during COVID, should something like this happen again? So I think, for example, I think Mr. Cunha and his staff and the rest of the town did an amazing job in responding to COVID on the fly, addressing things in an emergent manner as quickly as possible. I thought it was amazing, frankly, from, at the time, a resident's perspective. It would be nice to replicate that, you know. Is there, I assume there was, you know, some sort of guidelines that were followed, and especially with, with Mr. Cunha's extensive experience in emergency management. But is there something that we can replicate? Is there something that we can make sure that, okay, we need to do this, this, and this moving forward? I had, one of the committees I was most interested in hearing from was the Resilience and Energy Commission, but focused on the resilience portion as opposed to the energy portion, to see, you know, what, what thoughts do they have in terms of what they saw that did work, didn't work, et cetera. So that, you know, again, just, just brainstorming and talking it through, those are, I think that's why I say yes to everything that you mentioned, because it's really all-inclusive in terms of what I intended.
I would say too, in terms of lessons learned, if we have to go through this again, one of the things that really struck me was when I learned about this a few years ago, I was really impressed. Our fire department does a med pods test, or exercise, every year. Med pods, I forget what, medicine, point of distribution system, I think it is. And basically, they assume that we've got some kind of medical crisis that requires either medication or inoculation. And they have a system where they can inoculate the town in days. They set up and they practice in the high school. Okay, folks who are symptomatic go this way, folks who are asymptomatic go this way. Fantastic, impressive thing. And I think they threw it out the window when, I mean, we did use some of it. But, but then the Department of Health comes to us and says, hey, we've got 50, we've got, I don't know, it was 90, I guess, 90 batches of vaccine. Do it any way you want. Well, that's not the med pod system. The med pod system kind of presumes that we're either inoculating everybody or inoculating a certain population, not that we have to come up with it. So what happened? Jim came up with a system, kind of on the fly, that said, all right, we're going to get everybody's age. Everybody sign up, you get, you put your birth date down, and we're going to get everybody's age, and we're just going to go oldest to youngest. Because we don't have the ability to, our system isn't HIPAA compliant, we can't track medical conditions and things like that. And none of us are masters in public health or virologists or anything like that. So that was a great system that we had to kind of come up with on the fly, because the ground shifted underneath us. The Department of Health gave us vaccines without any guidance. So I think that was a great lesson learned, and I think it's a wonderful idea to keep track of that, because maybe it'll happen again. But, you know, we, we had sort of expected that the chief is going to get the call and everybody's going to, I mean, at least I had. I thought we were going to get the vaccines distributed in that way, and we're going to, we were going to activate that plan. And they practiced it every year, so it was going to be great. But they didn't really do it that way. There were many ones done. But anyway, that was a lesson learned.
And, and, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
I, I just, going back to the original agenda item, the document provided by the boards, there were two items on the Senior Services Advisory Board that I thought were really good to point out. One was the, the check-in program, calling folks who were homebound, I mean, for a time, everybody was homebound, but calling folks who needed to be checked in on. And I learned from reading this that there's a state program that does it. So I think partnering with that is terrific. And then this, this call for, and I think it's kind of universal, we saw it in other places, more outdoor programming, which I think is just something that's going to, that's going to be around for a long time. People enjoy it generally, and now there's, you know, public health reason to enjoy it. And then, you know, piggybacking on, on what's been said, maybe a good first step is to have a workshop. And we invite anybody who wants to come discuss, what did we all learn from this? What would we like to see from our community? And that can inform whether we have, you know, a chair-appointed person from each board meeting, or whether it needs its own committee, or whether, maybe there are multiple committees that, that come out of it. But just bring everybody together and kind of just, you know, share, share what we've learned.
Okay. So I'm just making a note, because that's, I'm liaison to Resilience and Energy, and I know you wanted to, to seek their input, so I'll ask them to put that on the agenda. And for all our committees, if we can say, just one more time, if you can just make it an agenda item, and then we'll kind of collect those and determine sort of the next step, whether it's an ad hoc committee or something like that. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And, and actually, in fact, what, you know, what I'd suggest, and, and Mr. Castell, I'm interested in what you think in terms of how it might have worked on the EDC over the course of last year, I guess, is, you know, maybe having it not just one more time, but as like a standing item, so that they have, they have one opportunity to kind of think about it, and one opportunity to actually put forth, you know, some, you know, I guess, harder suggestions, as opposed to, you know, again, just similar to what we're doing now, just going off the coffin and brainstorming. Because you brainstorm, and then you narrow it down to more concrete thoughts.
The only limit is that a standing item can become a floating item, you know, where, where they think, okay, well, we just went through these steps, we had to get to this tonight. There's got to be a little bit of a sense of urgency, that, that we're looking for this by a certain amount of time, or else if, if there's a full agenda, then it, then it'll, it'll get kicked. And so that's the only thing I, I would worry about, having that. We say, okay, by this time, we're going to make a decision on, we do this, or we'll set up a workshop, or whatever our process might be. The only worry I have is that these ideas can sound great, and then they kind of go out into the ether, and we kind of, yeah, we talked about that, didn't we? And that's what it becomes. We want to avoid that. And so that's, that's where I talked about, a little more of a, some kind of a formalization to provide a, a channel for these actually to, to be, come to fruition.
Yeah, okay.
And whatever that may be, I'm open to that. I think this is a great idea. The concept is great. But we, I, I'd want to, and I, and I'm, I'm thinking out loud. But I'd want to sort of formalize that process to have some, some sense of, if not urgency, then that this is something that is, that we fully intend to, to have action items acted upon from, you know, from this process.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm going to suggest that we put, we, we put on the agenda for either November or December, that, one, we talk to our own individual committees about providing additional feedback, and that we put this on the agenda for our November meeting or, or our December meeting, and consider appointing an ad hoc committee or taking some other step to, to look further at these suggestions, and to, to bring them out of the ether and, and right in front and center in front of us. Does that make sense?
I think that makes sense to me. It makes sense to everyone else.
Okay. So I'll just, I'll put it down for our November meeting, and we'll, I don't think we need to make a motion. We can all just talk to our committees and let them know that. Okay. Next on our agenda is to discuss an act on the East Providence Sewerage Treatment Facility repairs. And Jim Cunha will take us through this.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I gave you a memo that kind of walks you through this, but I just wanted to take you through strategically where we are. The sewage treatment is completed at the East Providence facility in Riverside, right by the old train station in Riverside, just off the bike path. If you remember, about 10 years ago, there was a sewage rupture along the bike path. Along the bike path from our last pump station, Alan, can you join me up here, just so he can weigh in? I'll get my civil engineer to support me. Us, we run a line that's about three mi, over three miles from our last pump station to that treatment facility. That line is a 12-inch line. We probably require an 8-inch line. What's the difference? Well, what you have when it isn't full, and when it isn't flowing, like it is when, at halftime at the Super Bowl, when it's not flowing heavy, when we have dry weather, that effluent moves very slowly through that pipe that has a lot of atmosphere in it. That atmosphere creates sulfate. And those sulfates get, eat into concrete and deteriorate treatment facilities as well as water lines. So what has happened is, the treatment facility in East Providence, they believe, from a consultant that came in, is in need of approximately $4 million in repairs. Barrington typically, month to month, pays about 25% of that bill for that plant, based on how much, what percentage of effluent we're putting into that plant. It's typically 25 to 30%. Well, you would say, well, then we should pay 25 to 30% of that repair bill. The problem is, we are the cause of the deterioration. It's proven by the engineers, because of, they've taken the readings. Our sulfate levels are to the point where it's impacting the operation of that plant. The good news is, over the last three years, Alan and his team have put together with a contractor, a treatment plan that has drove those sulfates down. So it's not continuing to be a problem. We're not continuing to deteriorate that plant. But we have been the cause of the deterioration in the past. So talking with Mayor De Silva in East Providence, his initial comment to me was, well, you caused the problem, you need to fix it. I'll do 10%, you do 90%. Over a course of many conversations and a, and a brief that we got from the consultant, I eventually reached an agreement with him. My proposal, with the understanding that it need to be approved by you, was that we would pay 40% of the repair cost, which would be approximately $1.6 million. But it's cer, if we went to court on this thing, I think, and Alan would agree with me, that we're probably going to lose in court, and we're going to end up paying for most of it. So I think the 40% is a deal. Now, the other good news is, the ARP funding, the American Rescue Plan funding specifically lists infrastructure projects with sewage. So instead of putting the burden of this repair on the taxpayers, we can put it in the ARP plan. About our $4.4 million worth of ARP, 1.6 or around there, would go to the sewage treatment repair. That would leave us approximately, I think, 2.8 left in the plan. The way the plan works is, there's a revenue loss formula of 4.1%. So we assume since 2019, that our revenue increased by 4.1%. And then we work the equation back to see how much revenue we actually got and what that revenue loss was. Anything that is revenue loss or can be attributed to revenue loss can be pulled out of that plan and not, and not, without restriction, can be used without restriction. So we could use it for sidewalks, we could use it for whatever we have. And we have that committee put together that's going to kind of put through that. But I'm trying to get ahead of the plan in the sense that I think the sewage treatment plan is something that needs to be done. It needs to be done quickly, and that's why I brought it to you tonight. Alan?
Well, yeah, I can add a little bit more on the history, if you'd like. We, we've been, all of our sewage is, is treated at East Providence, as Jim said, Bullock's and Crest Avenue. And that's been in an agreement since, in the early, mid-'70s, an agreement was put together between the two towns. The sewer system went online in the early, late, late '70s, early '80s. At the time, the East Providence Treatment Facility, where the sewage comes in for both East Providence and Barrington, it was an open structure. It, it didn't have a roof, it wasn't enclosed. But as, as you can imagine, the, the treatment plant was designed for an average day of 10 million gallons per day. No roof on it, neighbors nearby, and it's, it's nice on a hot day like today, you know. And so it was odors. And so as the time went on, neighbors complained and more and more, and it's about the odors. They then sold the treatment facility to a private entity, and that entity started as, I believe, a SUE, Viola, and then SUEZ. And the treatment facility was upgraded with new EPA standards. The EPA standards, and it also was enlarged to handle wet weather flow, which basically Jim, you know, brought up a little bit. Where, where average day Barrington is about 1.1 million gallons of sewage a day. We pump with our 15 pump stations to East Providence every day. During wet, the wet season, we have infiltration and inflow into our pipes. That 1.1 million gallons could increase to 3 million gallons average day flow, or I shouldn't say average, a daily flow. But you, when you design a force main, you don't just design for the average day. You have to also accommodate for peak flows, severe weather, build out, you have to also consider build-out conditions. In, in 2006, the three-and-a-half-mile force main from Brick Yard Pump Station, which is off Allegiant Way, to the East Providence Treatment Facility, which is owned by us, ruptured. Now, there was no other way to, sorry, I'm rambling a little bit, but I'm trying to get into where, where we're going here. There was no other way to bypass that sewage flow. So we had to do temporary bypass, and that 24-inch diameter pipe was constructed of a, a pre-stressed cylindrical concrete pipe, which was known for rupturing and failing, which it did. And at that time, we decided to upgrade it to an epoxy-lined ducted lion pipe with polywrapped. That way, corrosive pH, low pHs in the soil, we're protected. And inside, we're, we're, it's like a plastic lined, so we're protected from the gases. So as Jim mentioned, gases form, the longer sewage sits, you, you get hydrogen sulfide gases. Over time, as, as, you know, the pumping and pumping, that, those gases have been there for years. But it's, it's normal. East Providence also has the same problem with their Silver Street Pump Station. It's a, it's about a three-quarter mile pumps, pump, pump line, and that also has a same problem. So over time, with, with the new facility SUEZ, they encapsulated the headworks. And we believe that headworks was encapsulated with the concrete, but it wasn't coated. So there was delamination of the steel, there was deterioration of the concrete. We argue that they didn't design it properly. They're saying it's the sulfides, and it basically was a stalemate. So, you know, I think the deal Jim worked out was fair and equitable, in my opinion. We still didn't admit, you know, because it, it's hard to prove. But anyway, over time, when you encapsulate and enclose that sewage, there's going to be deterioration. We had no say in that design. That design was incorporated and constructed in the 2012, 2013 timeframe. And then over time, we, we heard that, oh, you're, you're getting high sulfides, you're getting... high sulfides, you're getting high sulfides. So they would email me daily, you know, to let me know if the sulfide. Now sulfides, uh, get worse during the hot weather, dry weather, um, less flow into it. So our 15 pump stations pump daily. Um, right now, with the wet weather, sulfide's on as bad, but we still treat it. Um, and, and that, that force main in Barrington, our, our force main, i- is, is pretty well set, so we know it's in good shape. We also have an air release chamber in the Alfred Drown area that actually burps the pipe. It's a high point in the pipeline and allows the pipe to burp. Um, but this treatment we had, as Jim mentioned, it's a bi oxide. It, it's a drip system that we have at Brickyard Pond that we, we dose every day to make sure we're feeding it. We're feeding it constantly. Um, but during the wet weather, we, we monitor it, and there's times during the, the winter and the spring, we're not putting any chemicals. So it works out pretty well. East Providence is very happy, we're happy. Um, and, sorry if I'm rambling here, but if there's anything you want me to elaborate on, I can't.
It's helpful to have the, it's helpful to have the history. So it sounds like where we are now is, if, if we had been doing this, uh, from the beginning, and let's put aside the fact that it could have been built better or something like that, existing conditions at the treatment plant, if we had been treating like this from the beginning, there would have been some, there would have been less sulfides there. I mean, of course, they produce their own, but there would have been less.
Right.
Is that, and as it is now, is it, uh, kind of substantially reducing where we are? Uh, what, what's coming? And do we test just before it gets in there?
We do. We, we test at, at the East Providence, the manhole in Bullocks, on Bullocks Avenue, at Crest Avenue. We have a sampling port there. The only problem is, that's the only port that we have access to, and that also discharges on East Providence Silver Street Pump Station. So we have to make sure, it's a, it's a great time to do it. So if you want to come down and see it, you have, you have to dose into the sewage as it's pouring in from one line and, and not get it in the other line, if you know what I'm saying. So it's a, it's a fun time. But, 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 but the, the, uh, the treatment is working, and it works very well. It's expensive, but it, it's recommended. Um, it's, it's, in fact, East Providence is using that for their lines now also. But it, it's, it, it works well, and like I said, there's the, the wet season, we're not pumping anything into it, and we monitor it. It's actually, um, we work with our consultant, which is, uh, Evoqua Water out of Jacksonville, Florida, and it's, we, we keep a, a, a computer screen up, we monitor it daily. If, if it goes up, don't, in East Providence, they're, they're not shy about emailing, well, I should say SUEZ, their treatment facility, about letting me know that there's an issue. The gases are, uh, skyrocketing. Um, but you can also smell it. It's, it's odorous. But we take soluble samples and we take atmospheric samples. So we're doing both. But we work with them well, and, and everyone's happy now. We've been doing that since September 2018, and it's been working well. So we had a good dry season last year. We had the drought, worked great, and, um, things are going well, so.
Okay. Okay, but, uh, the, the issue remains, and, and you, you agree that there needs to be repairs at the sewage treatment plant?
Yeah, the, the extent is, um, is still unknown. I think this is on the higher end. They feel that once the tanks are de-watered, they think there may be more. I feel like if the tanks are full, there's less likely of damage. It's when it's, when the sewage becomes atmospheric, that's when we cause the, the caustic situation on the concrete. So I, I think below the water level, we will be okay, but that's just, you know, I'm, I'm throwing dice here in the, in the dark.
Yeah.
So, but this is on the higher end, so it could come in less than this.
Okay. Um, Jacob, yes, please.
Um, so I think it's, it's terrific negotiation to go from 90 down to 40, so I appreciate that. And to be able to do this, um, sounds like absolutely required repairs, um, in a way that isn't going to impact taxpayers, I think would be certainly ideal. Um, I don't know enough about the Rescue Plan funding to know, um, how much would be kind of unrestricted and how much wouldn't be. Um, you said there was a, a projection of the 4.1. Where, where do we stand with what could be unrestricted with the 4.4?
3.3 million.
Of 4.4?
Is unrest, could be unrestricted.
So we're at about 0.5 unrestricted if we do this, that we'd be using toward this?
No, we wouldn't use the unrestricted fund. We'd use the restricted fund.
Well, but we, we have 4.4 total.
Right, and this is 1.6.
4.8?
4.8, so 4.8 means that, that 1.5 is restricted. Am I right about that?
3.4. 4.8 million in funds.
Right.
If we deduct 1.6 for the sewage treatment, that's, that, that would come out of the restricted fund amount.
But before deducting that, let's, let's start with the, the 4.8 and deduct what's unrestricted.
That's, if we, if we deduct what's unrestricted, that's 1.5.
Correct.
Correct?
Okay, so 100,000 unrestricted will go toward the sewage.
Yes.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's much less than, than I would have been concerned. How close are we to knowing what the recommendation of that committee?
We're not. We, we're still waiting for Treasury to flush out the exact rules, so we're not, we know what we can use for, you know, that it can be used for some things, absolutely, and this is one of those things.
Right, right.
So, um, I, I want to make sure everybody has their questions on, on the substance. I'm going to suggest that we authorize not to exceed, and, and in that way, uh, it would be the lesser of 40% or 1.6. So if, if as Alan hopes, and we hope, it costs less than the projected amount, then our contribution would be 40%. If it ends up
Correct.
costing the projected amount, our contribution would be 1.6. But I don't want to authorize more because I'm always afraid that somebody's going to find some way to, you know, if there's money out there, let's spend it. Let's, let's come up with a, another part of this or something. Uh, so.
So 40%, 40% or 1.6 million, whatever is less.
Yes, so I'm going to suggest a, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the town manager to enter an, into an agreement with the City of East Providence, using American Rescue Plan funding for payment, not to exceed, the lesser of 40% of the shared cost of rehabilitation of the Riverside Sewerage Treatment Facility or $1.6 million. So.
Second.
Okay. So Mary, I, I went with the draft motion, and then I said, the lesser of 40% of the shared cost, the rest of it, or 1.6 million. Do you have that?
No.
Okay, and it was seconded by Council Brier discussion. Vice President Hump, please.
Thank you. I, uh, I'll say, I, I support the motion, but I have a question for Mr. Cunha first. Uh, since it is slightly different than it sounds like you've discussed already with East Providence's mayor, do you foresee any issue with this change on your, your next discussion with him?
No, I, we agreed with 40%. He said that, you know, 4 million was the estimate. Hopefully Alan's right, and it's less. If it's more, I'm going to have to come back to you. But our agreement was with 40%. And I'll, I'll tell him, I've got exactly what I've been given permission to, to agree to, and if it, if it comes out to more than that, then I'll be back with hat in hand.
Great, okay. Thank you.
Any motions made and seconded? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions that motion carries. Thanks, Alan. Thank you, Jim, for your hard work on that. We're fortunate to have the American Rescue Plan, because that is a, a bill that would be paid by the Barrington taxpayers. Um, next on our agenda is to discuss and act on bids, and the first one is for Resiliency Planning Consultant, and that's Phil. If you could take us through that, please. Jacob, did you say the second bid you have to?
It was the third.
Um, so the town advertised this position to continue with this Resiliency Planner Consultant, and we received one, one proposal, and luckily it came from Kim Jacobs, who has done an excellent job, and she will continue to do an excellent job. I'm sure of that. And the suggested motion would be to approve this bid. I have the funding outlined in the memo as well, with the funding sources.
Approve the contract extension for Kim Jacobs as Resiliency Planning Consultant in the amount of $32,000.
Yes, with 22,000 from the capital reserve account, and the remainder from the operating budget from my department.
Okay. Um, I can, I can say, working with Kim as part of the, as liaison to Resiliency and Energy, she's done a fantastic job. It's been a, a very, uh, very, very active position. As soon as we engaged her, um, she had already been working on the, what was that, what's the name of that project? The, the flooding, uh, community rating system.
Yes.
Um, but then we engaged her as, as, in this position, and she started getting, uh, a lot of grants and kind of taking quick advantage of these things. Always good to be first in line, and she was always first in line. So, um, been very fortunate, but it's been very active, so. Um, any questions for Phil on this? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the contract extension for Kim Jacobs as Resiliency Planning Consultant in the amount of $32,000.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions that motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next on our agenda is Chief Coria, the, uh, to award a bid for 2022 police vehicle purchase from the Rhode Island Master Price Agreement. Good evening, Chief. Can you tell us a little about this, um, this purchase?
So, uh, the, the price is negotiated, um, for the whole state. It gives us the opportunity to buy the cars at the best, the best price available. Uh, the influx of the two new cars allows us to maintain the fleet at, at tip-top level. Uh, and also, at the bottom level, we, we move cars out of the fleet, and we can, we can assess whether to, to sell those. Uh, there's a few other communities that have bought those cars in the past. The cars that we move out of the fleet, um, more than likely will not be four-by-fours. Um, and also, they're aging, they're going to need more repairs, and they're less safe, quite frankly. Uh, the two new cars that we're thinking of purchasing in this order is, they're both four-cylinder vehicles, uh, similar to what we bought the fire chief, or you bought the fire chief last year. Um, the power's fine, and they're more fuel-efficient. So I think that it, uh, it, it makes sense from the perspective of maintaining a tip-top fleet.
Um, now, do we know right now, I know that, uh, one of the great advantages to sticking with one kind, like the Explorers, is that we can take the equipment out of one and put it into the next.
Yes.
That isn't always the case, because sometimes they upgrade the model gear and it's just off a little bit, so it won't work. Do we know if we can do that here, or will we need to also buy new equipment for it?
Um, the two vehicles that we're thinking of purchasing, that the, this, the proposal is, are going to be not line vehicles, so they're going to be less expensive all the way around, because we're not going to need cages, and the lighting equipment is at a lower level. It's not going to be.
Okay.
It's not going to be as costly to the town.
Okay, that's, that's great. That is a very good price, I know. Um, 32,600 for each, for these Explorers. Um, any questions for Chief? Uh, does anyone want to make a motion? Uh, I will ask if anyone wants to make a motion to award the bid in the amount of 65,276,30 cents to Taska Automotive Group for the purchase of two 2022 Ford Explorer L, XLT utility SUV vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions that motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for your support.
I'm recusing from this bid.
Okay. Uh, uh, Council Brier is recusing from this next discussion. This is to award a bid for the Executive Artistic Director of the Barrington Community Summer Theater. Is Michelle going to take us through that? I'm, I'm just making that assumption because it's activities. I, I should have checked first.
Good evening. So this bid is for an Executive Artistic Director of the Barrington Community Theater and the Barrington Enrichment Summer Theater. Um, the sole bid that we received was from Kelly McCabe. Um, Kelly has been doing this, acting in this position for the last eight years and has done a great job. Um, she brings a lot of diversity to our program, which I know reflects what the town is looking for. You know, she works with a lot of kids who, who otherwise would feel isolated due to gender identity, and some are on the spectrum, and, and some have special needs. So, um, she really brings a lot to this program. So I'm asking that the Town Council award the bid for Executive Artistic Director of the Barrington Community Theater and Barrington Enrichment Summer Program for a three-year period through August 2024 to Kelly McCabe for the amount of 20,500.
For each year?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, per year. And just so you know, all of her funds, all of the funds come out of the program itself.
Okay.
It's self-funding, correct?
Yes.
Uh, any questions? Okay, uh, do I hear a motion to award a bid of 20,500 for each year of a three-year contract to Kelly McCabe as Executive Director of the Barrington Community Theater, Barrington Enrichment Summer Theater?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, okay. So we've got a couple, um, more items. Yes, we're all set. Um, uh, so for the, uh, agenda for, uh, Monday, October 4, we'll discuss an act on solar fields. That was one that Resilience and Energy wanted to do, wanted, wanted to bring up. Um, the discussion on minimum wage, the questions and data, that's Council Brier. Discuss an act on street parking update, that's, uh, our town manager. Discussion on local taxes, elderly volunteers. There is a new, uh, law in place, and, um, it, it allows towns to, I want to say, compensate seniors for their volunteer work by a reduction of their taxes. Um, and award the bid for Watson Avenue Real Estate Development Company Consultant. So there'll be proposals for a bid for a consultant to kind of take us through and do some, um, what do they call them? Not preliminary plans, but conceptual drawings. Um, and then also consider appoint, oh, for November, consider appointing an ad hoc committee for, uh, lessons learned for COVID. Does anyone have anything else for the next agenda that they want to add?
I just wanted to, um, comment, um, two things on the minimum wage discussion. Um, the, the first is the, I shared a document with, or a spreadsheet with the town manager. Uh, I saw that you responded, but, um, would the other pieces of information that are on that sheet be able to be filled in in advance of next meeting?
I, I looked at what you sent me, the spreadsheet you sent me, and the spreadsheet I sent you, and I, from what I can interpret, you've got everything that you need, you asked for and more. So if you have more specifics about what additionally you want, additional you want, please let me know. You know, you can send me an email that outlines it, but it looked like I fulfilled the requirement.
Okay, so, yeah, uh, the wages going up to a higher amount, not stopping at 15 an hour?
I, okay, I thought it did, but. Okay, I thought it did, but.
So it listed all the jobs and wages, but then not the hours and the costs?
It did, it did, so we'll, we'll work on it.
And then also the, the job that the person reports to, so that we know if a manager is under the 15, because you, when this came up the first time, you brought up that there are tiered people, that if you move one, you have to move the person they report to. So I just want to be sure that we're able to understand that, the stratification.
The direct supervisor you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also that this be on the next month's agenda, because we first discussed it in March, and it keeps getting pushed later. So if we can be sure that this will be on October, so we don't start to get into an issue where it's too late for next budget season.
Yeah, I had intended for it to be on this agenda. I had to push a number of things off this agenda, you know, because there were, one of the things was that presentation that we watched, that was time-sensitive, too. So I'm going to make every effort to have that on the agenda, in addition to the solar fields that I wanted on there myself, and the on-street parking stuff. So I don't see any reason why it's not.
I didn't, yeah, there, yeah. Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Anything else to add to next month's agenda? All right, so maybe we can just do a very quick update, Amy, and look at it. So do I hear a motion to move into executive session in accordance with Rhode Island 4246 5A5, acquisition of property, and discuss and approve sealed minutes of executive session held on June 7, 2021, and September 8, 2021, for placement on the October 4, 2021 Town Council agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And no abstentions, we are moving into executive session. Thank you. Thank you, Laura.